It's crazy that it's August. We will open the meeting with a roll call vote, starting with Jack.
Jack Creighton here.
Corey Evans here.
Jeanne Haley Dippold here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Harry Thompson here, and I will briefly read our Zoom virtual meeting language. Tonight's meeting will be conducted on the Zoom platform and live streamed on Cohasset 143 TV and our Facebook page. The public is invited to participate here on our Zoom platform, which can be accessed using the link provided at the top of the posted agenda for tonight's meeting. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called on by me. Board members will be able to ask questions of any participant. All votes taken at this meeting will be by roll call. Members of the public who wish to ask questions are asked to raise their virtual hand on Zoom. And at my discretion, we will promote you into the meeting and you must provide your full name and address for public record. Please note that comments on Facebook are not being monitored. And this meeting is also being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset 143 TV. So we don't have anyone in the waiting room, I think, for the pledge tonight. We thought we found someone last minute because someone else canceled on us earlier today. So we got to do it as a group. So I will turn my computer towards our flag. Kind of see it, all right? And everyone is invited to stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
But liberty and justice for all.
All right. It's more fun having people lead us. So we'll work on making sure we get those scheduled in the future. All right, I will now allow for any public comment if we have anyone joining us for public comment. Let me check the room. See if I see anyone. Yes, I believe I see someone. I believe we have Andy Whitney joining us. Hi, Andy. If you can hear us, you are in our Zoom room for public comment. Andy? I'm trying to get him to unmute.
My bad. Three clicks, three clicks and I got here.
We can hear you, Andy. Hi. So please just again state your name and address. See your name.
Good afternoon. Andy Whitney, 50 Margin Street. And I just want to speak briefly with regard to the movie production that's currently taking place through the town. Geographically, 50 Margin Street is directly across the street from the Oaks Main Gate. And I'm just going to refer to the property as the Oaks. I don't know if it's the Butler property, the former Roy property or what have you, but we're going to call it the Oaks Estate at this point. My life and family has been significantly impacted in the last five or six days and will continue to be impacted by what's taking place in and around the neighborhood here and certainly across the street on the property. Through Herculean efforts by Chief Sylvia and Town Manager Chris Senior, I think we've come to a little bit of resolution, or at least an agreement with the production company at this point as to sustaining some of the, I guess, noise abatement is for lack of a better term. If any of the board members want to hear some of the specifics or my rant that some of you may have heard either firsthand from me or secondhand from others that do know my story, I'm happy to elaborate. But I just want to say to the board that, again, through the efforts of primarily the Town Manager and Chief Sylvia, I think we're at a point where we can move forward and presumably that this production will cease in the next 72 hours as their schedule has been published. My apologies to Ms. Kennedy for interrupting her Saturday morning after a long night of no sleep here at 50 Margin Street due to the noise and disruption from across the street. I apologize, Dan. I had no idea you were with your family on vacation, so.
No need to apologize. That's what I'm here for. That's our job.
In any event, we've kind of moved some of the access to the Oaks property away from my house so that hopefully the noise abatement will be a little bit less than it's been over time. And we've also, through the generous, just say from the production company to kind of say, we're very sorry. They generously agreed to make a donation to two charities. The Jimmy Fund and to the Cohasset Food Pantry. So for my agit, I guess, for lack of a better term, but I think Chief Sylvia will coordinate with the contact at the production company to, you know, to get him the information as to where to send the checks and, you know, the tax information that can be returned back. So from to the production company.
No, we really appreciate you coming to talk about that, Andy. And I will say I do see Chris Arena, the producer here in the audience, listening. And they've been very responsive, I think, to the needs of our town. And I'm really glad that you've been able to work through this. But I will say as a board, we were hoping this would be minimal disruption to the town. And we did our best to ensure that, but we knew there would be a little bit of disruption. So I apologize. And it's been a hard week for your family.
My only criticism to the board is I think you might have looked at everything through some rose colored glasses. I don't think there was enough due diligence on your part to truly understand what the extent of the production that's taking place throughout the whole town. So my only criticism, I will say shame on you. And obviously in the future, if something like this comes along, it's not the first rodeo here at the Oaks Property. But if it does come along again, I would just like a little bit more notice as to what's going to transpire. I mean, frankly, if Mr. Arena is on the call, he knows my complaint. But, you know, basically, the only notice we received as residents and neighbors was a flyer that was put in our mailbox that basically talked about the movie and the shooter or some of the few details with regard to what was actually going to transpire. And that notice was placed in the box the day shooting started. You know, I think if I had some notice and was a little bit more prepared, you know, I certainly would not have reacted the way I have at this point.
All right, that's valid criticism. And we really appreciate you taking the time to come share those thoughts.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Andy. Okay, I don't know if I see anyone else here for public comment. So we can move on to our next order of business, which is finishing our legal RFQ interviews and then possibly deliberating and discussing our legal decisions that we have to make. So I believe we have one more interview with attorney Carolyn Murray with KP Law. Hi, Carolyn.
How are you? Good to see you folks.
Great to meet you. Thank you for coming.
No problem. Sorry I couldn't join you two weeks ago when you were meeting with the rest of the gang.
Yes, we got to meet the rest of the gang, but before making a decision, we really wanted to meet you as well because we know you worked very closely on issues especially related to land use. So I'll just start off by asking a basic question that we've asked everyone. And then Jack and Jean have some more specific questions about land use specifically that they asked the other interviewees. All right. So just again, thank you for being here. And we just kind of want to get to know you a little bit in terms of your philosophy as an attorney for a town like ours, which is a small town with this type of government structure that has a town meeting and, you know, a select board and town manager. And just could you tell us a little bit about your philosophy of working with our type of town?
Sure. One thing that I think might set me a little bit apart from some of my other colleagues that you met is that I actually worked for a municipality for 14 years. So I know what it's like to be the municipal employee with members of the public banging on your door and having certain expectations. I know what it's like to also have to balance some of the demands of competing boards and things like that. One of the things I've always seen, or I should say I have never seen as being my role is I am not a member of any particular board. I am not going to try to put my thumb on the scale and lead you to vote one way or another. I think my job is to provide you with the best legal advice I can give you so that you can make the best informed decisions that you can make. Not to tell you whether your decision is right or wrong. It's really just to give you all the tools so that in the end, hopefully you can come up with the most defensible decision. You know, whichever way you may decide to go. I had a conversation with a building inspector in a community just last week about an ancient subdivision. And I don't know how many times I said to him, I don't think this is a lot that has frontage or is grandfathered in any way, but I am not the building inspector. So it is not going to be my name or my signature on that zoning determination letter that you issue. So it is yours and I'll respect whatever decision you come up with. And he said, well, with all due respect, Carolyn, I see it a different way. Okay, so that's, you know, that's fine. But at least he heard me out. And I heard him out and I can understand where he was coming from as well. But my overall philosophy is to provide you, whether it's the planning board, the zoning board, the select board, to provide you with as much information as you need to make a good decision for the town.
Okay, thank you. Jean and Jack?
Attorney Murray, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm good. I'm good. I'm Jeanne Haley Dippold, and I have a question that I've asked the other attorneys who are being proposed to be land use counsel with respect to their particular firm. So my question is, can you describe how you will ensure, keeping in mind the other municipal work that you have for other towns and cities right now, that Cohasset, including its boards and commissions, receives the substantive expertise, timely responses and training as applicable when, one, reforming our zoning bylaws, two, handling permitting decisions, including in real time during a hearing, and three, handling litigation if and when it arises?
Okay, so a lot built into that question. So if I miss something, please follow up. One, you know, balancing and various towns and being responsiveness is obviously the most important thing. I know that submitted with our proposal, you see the other towns that I'm responsible to. But I also, I think you could, I have no hesitation whatsoever. You could reach out to any of my communities and you could ask them, have they had a complaint with responsiveness? And I think every single one of them would tell you, no. If I am not available for some particular reason, whether it's because, I mean, court, I'm at another board hearing, whatever it happens to be, I always respond as quickly as possible and tell them where I am and how soon I think I could be available. But I also make it a practice that if I get a request in, say, by, you know, email request, and it's something that a planning board or a zoning board has coming up at their next hearing, I will always ask, if it's not provided immediately in the request, I will always say, when do you need this by? Because I recognize you don't need it at 6:59 prior to a 7:00 PM meeting that night. You need it more like four or five days prior when it goes out in the packages that go out to the board members so that you can actually digest some of that prior to the meeting. So I know that that's always a challenge for all attorneys to balance because sometimes we can't control the competing demands that we have. If it is something that I know is not my particular area of expertise, or if it's something that I know that I have a colleague in the office who has recently handled a situation such as that or something related, I'll reach out to a colleague and say, hey, Cohasset needs this by Monday night. And I'm not going to be able to get to it for X, Y, or Z. Or, hey, you just had a case in another community very similar. I think this would be perfect for you to jump into and respond to. And in that is more, you know, I will always try to be the person who responds. But when I know that I may not be the best person to respond, I will pull the best person from our firm in and have them respond to the town. Did I cover everything? I'm not so sure if I did.
Do you have any follow ups?
Yeah, and I acknowledge my question was compound. But so the other, if you could talk briefly about your approach, including your experience with respect to bylaw reform, handling permitting decisions and handling litigation, that'd be appreciated.
Sure. Bylaw reform. I can't count the number of town meetings or town councils that I have attended over the last 25 years, all of which have some sort of zoning amendments involved. I can tell you that more recently, I've been involved with the town of Eastham just had a major rewrite of their zoning bylaw. Pembroke, I think, at their last town meeting had 17 zoning amendments on it, most of which I had written. I've done some specialty zoning bylaw rewrites, like when someone wants to just get into inclusionary zoning, affordable housing might be the focus. Or maybe there's a new overlay district that they want to be involved in. I'm working right now with one community and DHCD to create an urban center housing tip zone because there's an interest in two abutting communities to revitalize some vacant historic mill buildings. So I'd say as far as bylaws are concerned and drafting and review of them, I've got years of experience doing that. Permitting. This is probably the thing I enjoy the most. I enjoy the interaction with the local boards or the building inspector or the town planners. I, in my opinion, I'd rather be in on the ground floor with you as opposed to receiving a copy of the complaint that was just filed in land court and trying to figure out, well, how come we didn't make a specific finding on this when the bylaw called for a finding on this? So there are a number of communities that, depending upon their budgets, depending upon how they prefer to operate. I've got some communities that the building inspector or the planner prefer to have a conference call with me and go over certain controversial items on their agendas. I've got other clients that they just know when some particular project comes in that this is going to be one that they just want town council at every single meeting. So it ranges for me there in terms of the permitting is concerned. As far as litigation is concerned, if I have sat through the entire permitting process, I prefer to be the person that also handles the litigation because I find that there are things sometimes that might come up at a public meeting, a document or a person who spoke or maybe some sort of evidence that might be in my head or might be in my physical file, but might not be something that necessarily gets conveyed to, say, another attorney. When the complaint comes in, you've got a copy of the decision attached and you say to somebody else, all right, can you handle this for me? Some of that might get lost in the transition. So if I'm able to handle the litigation, I will. But again, if it's also something that I know that there's somebody in the office was far better equipped to handle that particular subject matter, I won't hesitate to say that to you or to the board members. And, you know, most of the time, you know, and I say most of the time, putting aside this COVID remote work environment that we most of us have been in for the past year and a half, we have a relatively small collegial firm. And if, you know, if you've got a Dover amendment issue, I know that George Pucci, who handled the Regis College case, is my colleague in the office that I'm going to go to for that. And, you know, he's six doors down. If you've got, you know, a waterways issue or some sort of controversial conservation issue, you know, my colleague Amy Questle is also somebody who lives nearby in Marshfield. She also is, you know, three doors down from me in the office. We have a lot of collaboration and discussion amongst ourselves. But if either of them happen to be better suited to handle the case, they're going to get everything that I know passed on to them and the support that they need through that litigation.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Sure.
Jack, you're up.
Yeah, Carolyn, Jack Creighton.
Nice to meet you, sir.
Well, thank you. Nice to meet you as well. I was Chair of Conservation for a number of years, served on that, I've been select board. A lot of history. And when my office was in Boston, I did a lot of zoning stuff for Fenway Park and et cetera and so on, all on a citizen's basis. Controversies. There are, first of all, two parts that are kind of intertwined. I'd like to hear some very specific, hard-nosed cases that you've had to deal with. And the other kind of seamy underside of all small towns and large towns, political pressure. Favored people asking for something to be approved. Orchestrated attacks against town officials, commissioners, all of which our town unfortunately has dealt with. That's a very difficult thing because public officials get a lot of pressure. And, you know, you'll get pressure as counsel to perhaps move a little bit towards a political wind, if you will. So those are tough questions. I know that's a real tough question to ask. But I think that's really one of the things that we would look for for counsel. So hard-nosed, understanding what the law is and is not, and the courage to say, this is what it is. And have fun.
I think one of the best examples that I could give of sort of that, you know, those orchestrated attacks or it really comes up quite often, I think, in the 40B context. And I've spent an awful lot of time in the last few years handling 40B cases. There's always, you know, there's always those folks who will stand up and say, look, I'm in favor of affordable housing, but this is not the right site because. And time and time again, I'll hear the impact that this is going to have on schoolchildren. And, you know, 300 apartments means that there are going to be X number of children and we'd have to build a new school and we just can't afford to do this and blah, blah, blah. I'm about as popular as a skunk at a lawn party when I have to say that that's not a valid reason for a board to consider for denying a 40B. But I've said it publicly. I've said it at recorded meetings when I've had to. I've said it in front of, you know, the applicant's council who shows up. And of course, there's the little sparring that tends to go on because they want to show you how much they know about, you know, about the statute, the regulatory scheme or case law decisions. You know, sometimes you just have to, you have to rise to that occasion under those same circumstances. And sometimes you are fully prepared for the fight and sometimes you had no idea that it was coming. But they are not particularly pleasant situations. You know, a similar type of experience, I remember when I was first interviewing to be, to work at what was Coleman and Page at the time, but now KP Law. And I remember one of the partners at the time asking me during an interview, how comfortable I felt arguing in court. And I said, God, give me a courtroom any day over town meeting. I said, because at least in courtroom, we know what the issue is. We have a defined body of case law and topics that we can expect to discuss. It's like after years of attending town meeting where we all think we're here talking about X and someone stands up and asks Y. And God, who knows what, where Y even came from, but you've got to think on your feet and come up with your best answer that you can give. You know, those to me are some examples of feeling the pressure, feeling the bodies in the room. I've had people follow me out to my car in the parking lot and try to argue with me. I've had people, you know, argue or email or threaten to report me because they don't agree with my opinion. Said, well, you know, do what you want to do. I stand by the opinion I've given. I didn't just say any, meany, mighty mo. I've given you a careful, thought-out opinion. Sorry if you don't respect that. And, you know, maybe this means a judge has to decide. But, you know, sadly, those are the situations I have found myself in. You know, in terms of political pressure, I will say this with a great deal of respect and genuine friendship for a mayor of a former municipality that I worked for. And there were a number of times where he wanted a project. He wanted something to get done. And there were a number of times I'd have to close the door and just say, Mr. Mayor, we can't do it this way. Or we can get you where you want to go, but there's a process we have to go through. I can't just wave a magic wand and make this happen. We have to do X, Y, and Z. And sometimes that's a little slower and a little bit clumsier. But, you know, I'm not doing my job if I don't tell you what the right process is. And again, I'm never going to be the sixth member of a board, but you hear me out. You can do what you want with it with the advice that's given. If you don't follow it, I'm still going to defend your decision if there's an appeal. You know, I'm not going to just say, well, you didn't do what I told you to do. So you're on your own now. It's still my job to defend that. So I'm cognizant of that every time I give an opinion that I can't just be so inflexible or rigid than think that everything is black and white. I realize there's area of gray. And if I've given you an opinion, you know, that might be a little more conservative than you'd like it to be, but I can also see a more liberal interpretation of it, I'm going to defend that if I have to.
Thank you.
In Cohasset, because we're a seaside community with a lot of environmental issues, that's been a particular touch point. So have you dealt with environmental issues where a conservation commission or planning says it's just environmentally, it's, you know, not consistent with the laws and how have you handled those?
I had, and it's still pending, I have a 40B that also had issues impacting a river, potential riverway. And issues arising under the Wetlands Protection Act. And of course, there's only so much authority the zoning board has with respect to, okay, we can grant waivers of our local bylaw, but other things you have to go to the Conservation Commission for. Conservation Commission would show up at the zoning board's meetings time and time again and plead with the zoning board, don't approve this project because of X, Y, and Z. You know, at the end of the day, the zoning board had to hold firm and say, look, our jurisdiction ends here. Your jurisdiction conservation commission begins there. And we had a situation where the zoning board of appeals granted the affordable housing comprehensive permit and the Conservation Commission denied the order of conditions. So that's, you know, still in litigation and we'll see who's right and who's wrong. But, you know, it was an issue having to do with a septic system and a separation distance between, you know, competing levels between stormwater runoff and the septic system because it was a rather tight, perhaps even overdeveloped site. You know, I also do an awful lot of work in a couple of Cape communities where the environmental issues there for them are really primarily water and sewer issues. You know, water is at a premium for them. They've also got septic system issues just because of their soil. So these are serious concerns whenever anybody comes in for any kind of a building permit whatsoever that, you know, between that, they're also, we're also working on at least two major restoration of rivers and marshland projects down there. You know, you've got to be able to balance the sensitivity to wanting to restore an ecosystem with also having to allow some development to take place. So those kinds of issues do come up. I haven't handled any 21E issues. If that's, you know, one thought that you had in mind, that, as I was saying earlier, that would not be something that would fall into my bailiwick. That would likely go to my colleague Mark Rich who handles those matters. But, you know, those are the types of conservation issues that I have come across.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And Corey and Diane, I know you asked your questions to the other colleagues at KP. So do either of you feel like you need to ask your questions or do you feel like we're okay?
Well, if I could, hi Carolyn. My question was much more focused more on sort of the town council, general council role. But just with specific to the land use and permitting boards, how do you sort of train and update them on any substantive content and the application of the bylaw? Like what is sort of the process in terms of making sure the boards and commissions that you work with are, you know, basic? the boards and commissions that you work with are, you know, basically up to date and understand their role and function?
We do a lot of trainings. One of the trainings I love to do the most is meeting with planning boards and zoning boards to talk about their roles and responsibilities. Or some of our clients have called it, the want you to do the staying in your lane training. I suppose one thing to say, stay in your lane. It's another thing. You know, I find, you know, you become a member of these boards and you get your copy of the open meeting law. You're told to take the conflict of interest online test and you're sworn in. It's like, go do great work. Yet I find that a lot of zoning board members in particular, they may not know the difference between a variance and a special permit. They may not know the difference between what standard they're supposed to apply when a decision, you know, an application comes before them. We also frequently see that just because somebody checked off the variance box on the application doesn't mean that they got it right. You know, it could also be that they really also need a special permit too, or they might also need site plan review or whatever. So I, you know, would never say to a board, boy, you guys really need some training because that's just downright insulting to folks. However, I do try to say in a more subtle way, look, if you'd like some training on what the the various areas of jurisdiction are and how you should handle each application as it comes and like identifying it, analyzing it and knowing what criteria to apply. Sometimes we get questions about, we have difficult people at our public meetings. And we just want to know, how do we conduct a public meeting when we've got somebody who we know is in the audience, who is just trying to be disruptive? I get a lot of questions about, you know, how do we write good, solid decisions? You know, we're, we're, we're a long ways from the days when a decision used to be like a one-page form where somebody would check off approved or denied. You know, we now need findings and we need to really justify the decisions that we've made. So I like to do training with with all of our boards. It doesn't have to be, gee, you know, you seem to not know how to handle this particular area very well, so therefore we think you need training. You know, getting new town council, if that's the route, the the route you actually take is a perfect opportunity to say, this is a good time for us all to meet town council. This is also a good time to take advantage of our free training. Whether that is done individually for certain boards or whether we do, you know, one large group training. Sometimes there's a training that you want for your board members, but maybe a slightly different training for full-time staff because their roles are just slightly different. But I, you know, I think that that is an important part. But I've also found myself sometimes being at a board meeting and having to remind folks like I, you know, one of the things I love the most is that after all of the public discussion goes on, the chair will often look to me and say, so so Carolyn, where, what, 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 what should we do next? It's like, well, Mr. Chairman, if you think you are done, you should close the public hearing and you should start to deliberate and remember you've got special permit findings that you you want to go through the bylaw. Ah, yes, thank you very much. Sometimes they're just subtle reminders like that. Other times, like you said, it can be a more and more intense training. The other thing too is whenever there's new decisions that come out, whether it's, you know, case law or whether it's something maybe from the attorney general's office that we think is going to have a wider applicability to other clients. We send out E updates. Now, most of those E updates are going to go to folks like you who sit on select boards or they're going to go to your town manager or town administrator. If it's also a land use issue, I will specifically send it to my building inspector, my town planner. You know, whoever your technical staff happens to be, that you, you know, your conservation agent, whoever it happens to be, because I find that sometimes these things come to the executive level. But it really would have been helpful if this also filtered down to the folks who are really in the weeds on this issue a little bit more. So I also make sure I say, hey, you might, you may have received this already three or four times, but consider this a fifth. And you know, I also get a lot of follow-up phone calls after those E updates fill out saying, gee, just looking at this, do we need to change our bylaw? Should we talk about this or how might this impact a pending application? So it, it, you know, it's a good opportunity to have a conversation about whether or not this really impacts what's currently before you or whether it's something just think about for the future.
Thank you. Diane, are you saying something? Okay. Cory, are you good or would you like to?
No, I'm I'm good over here. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much for coming to talk to us about these things. It was really important to us that we met you. And we're grateful for you coming tonight. So we really
Thank you very much. And like I said, I'm sorry I couldn't have been with you when the rest of the folks were there, but I'm glad you were able to have this time.
Wonderful. All right. Thank you so much. We will be in touch.
Thank you. Have a good rest of the meeting.
All right.
Carolyn.
Bye-bye.
So I'm really glad we got that done. And I do feel that we are ready to deliberate as a board, but I want to know how you all feel about maybe starting our hearing and doing our licenses and permits and then going back to deliberation. Only because I see see people waiting in the wings here for our hearing that was supposed to start at seven thirty. Do you all feel that would be appropriate? Cory, is that a hand or?
Yeah, it's a hand. I mean, I I I think that obviously we want to deliberate. This is a very important decision, so I don't think we should rush it. I think there's a decision that'll probably take us, you know, thirty minutes to an hour, so.
That's what I think.
I would be almost more comfortable for us to to schedule a special session for this. I think if we pushed it back, I don't think that'd be appropriate either to have discussion. Add something to the agenda at the end. I'm not quite sure that's an appropriate kind of pattern because I do know that there will be people that are interested in this. So, you know, I I think I personally be more in favor of of scheduling a deliberation at a separate time.
So you're not in favor of doing it tonight, just after we do our hearings and permits?
I am not. I mean, the only time that's would deliberate would be now because that's when it's on the agenda, but I think that we've got other stuff to deal with and you know, I think we shouldn't, we should be deliberating seriously for, you know, as I said, you know, a half hour or longer on this and and that wouldn't be fair to the other people on this agenda today.
No, I agree. This deserves serious deliberation. I I still think we could do it tonight, but I just want to make sure that the hearings and the permits, I think, are what we need to get done sooner rather than later. Jack?
Yeah, I think I I agree with Cory. This is a very, very serious and and far-reaching decision. And I know there are a lot of people who have great interest and they want to see the deliberation, the number of people who've come to me about this. So I think Cory's absolutely right. This is needs its own specific time. And I think we also should do it earlier, you know, during, during the day. I mean, not during the day, but in the early evening. So I mean, I think Cory's got excellent. It needs to have its own spot. This is serious. And we need to have it to facilitate people watching at home.
Jean, Diane, how do you feel about this? Do either of you have a thought? I was still ready to do it tonight and I I think it is absolutely serious, but we did have it on the agenda tonight. I I would have preferred to just move it in twenty minutes. But if everyone prefers to do a separate meeting, I am also okay with that. Jean, you unmuted. And then Diane.
I'm violent Diane going if she wants to.
Go ahead, Diane.
I mean, I would be prepared to do it tonight because it is on the agenda and I was expecting to do that. I I do think we should, if if it were to stay in tonight's agenda, we should do the hearing and then come back to it and give it whatever time it needs. I I also, while I'm also okay with having it at another meeting, I do think we should do it sooner rather than later. And I know that there are some scheduling issues with the rest of the month that we've expressed at other times. So finding that other time is is probably going to be more challenging than it should be. And again, as important as it is, I don't want it to go too long af- when we don't have some of the interview freshness. Although I take copious notes in our minds.
Okay. Jean, it's a, it's a two-two split right now.
Yeah, I share Diane's sentiments. I I feel the same way. I'm worried the longer you let it go that the longer things start to get stale, including from that last interview that we did. It was on the agenda for tonight. We talked about having it on the agenda at the last hearing, so we knew sort of that was the deal and and I also think it's important for us to make a decision to move on, including for the sake of boards and commissions that want answers and want them sooner rather than later. You know, we, we know that we have certain issues lingering in the background that, you know, we need to just start making decisions on and start planning. I I would frankly be reluctant to let this linger a month, particularly where one of the board's goals are are zoning bylaw reform. So the sooner we make a decision on that, the sooner we can really start to get that framework in place as need be. And actively move towards it. So I I would not be a fan of waiting for those reasons.
I I agree with Jean and Diane. I would like to move that we move the discussion deliberation portion of this agenda item that was supposed to be at seven oh five, move it after our public poll hearing and then after the licenses and permits. So whatever time we finish with those, I would like to move the deliberations for after that.
I'll move that.
Okay. Second.
A second.
All right. Roll call vote, starting with Jack.
I'm somewhat ambivalent, so I'll just abstain.
Okay.
Jean Haley Dipple die.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Okay. We will deliberate after we're done with our poll hearing and our licenses and permits. All right. So moving on to our continued advertised poll hearing about the Beechwood Street Poll. I'm going to open the hearing again and then let some people in who are waiting in the audience. Okay. The Cohasset Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August third at seven thirty PM via Zoom. National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc. are requesting permission to erect and maintain poles and wires to be placed thereon together with such sustaining and sustaining and protecting features, as said, companies may deem necessary to be owned and used in common by your petitioners in the following public ways or ways. Beechwood Street install, J O Poll forty-one four, approximately forty degrees northwest from existing Poll forty-one. The public is invited to offer input on this proposal in writing in advance of the public hearing or at the hearing. I want to make a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Okay. Do you have a second? All right, roll call, starting with Jack.
Uh, Jack, right now.
Corey Evans, I.
Jean Haley Dipple die.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. All right, the hearing is now open and I know we have Brian here in the audience and Jose from National Grid. Hi, Jose and Brian.
I'll start.
Yeah, go ahead.
I know you have a long, long night ahead of you, so we'll try to be brief. Yeah. So this is at two twenty-seven Beechwood Street. There's a, the National Grid replaced a utility pole across the street from two twenty-seven. It was connected previously to a tree that was in front of two twenty-seven Beechwood Street. That tree had fallen down from, from a storm and from rot. National Grid is going through, you know, battle of attrition of removing guy wires from trees and having engineered pole solutions for support of their their wires. So this is a replacement of that tree that had fallen down with a pole and a proper guy wire. Currently, the the pole set is being held up by a rope that goes across the street and is tied to a live tree as a temporary solution until they get this, this, this guy wire pulling. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jose if he has any additional comments.
Good evening, board. Hi, good evening. How you doing? Sorry about
Oh, no problem.
Oh, show. But yeah, basically like Brian said, we're just trying to rectify a problem that was done, you know, many years ago. We don't want guy wires like in trees and we'd like to put a pole in its place to support the wires across the street. You know, because it's primary and, you know, over time, the wires can bend over towards the other neighbor's residence. So that pole will be there to hold the structure in place and, you know, fortify the pole.
Okay. All right. And we just saw the pictures there. Brian, anything else you think we need to know?
Yeah, I would just add that I did walk the site with the resident at two twenty-seven. Mr. Armando Sanchez, he's in favor, he's aware of the work, he's in favor of the work and he's okay with the location that we looked at.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the board on this issue? I know last week we expressed some concerns about if neighbors had been informed or what was going on with that. It seems like everything's okay in that regard, but board, do you have any questions for Brian or or Jose? Doesn't look like it. Does anyone from the audience have any questions? Please raise your hand now. I don't see anyone. Okay. If if there's no other questions or concerns, I think we're ready for a motion.
Carrie, if if somebody could share the hearing notice, because I I don't think it's in our packet, so I don't have the address in front of me.
I have it in front of me. I can.
Okay, go ahead.
Alright, so I'd like to move that we approve the petition for joint identical pole locations by National Grid to install a pole at J size zero pole forty-one eighty-four, approximately forty feet northwest from existing Poll forty-one on Beechwood Street.
Second. All right, we have a second roll call vote, starting with Jack.
Jack, right now.
Corey Evans, I.
Jean Haley Dipple die.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. All right, we're all set with that. Thank you, Brian and Jose. And I believe we need to close the hearing now. So do we have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, another vote. Jack.
Jack, right now.
Corey Evans, I.
Jean Haley Dipple die.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. All right, the poll has been approved. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
All right. Can check that off the list. All right, moving on to licenses and permits, beginning with Holly Hill Farm. They are requesting a one-day liquor license for an interfaith social services event. I believe this happens every year. And I think we have Holly Hill here in the audience to promote. Hi, Holly Hill, if you can hear us or see us. Hi.
Cindy Prentice here.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. Glad to join.
Yeah, so just briefly describe the the event you're having.
Sure. Every year for the last four years, we have donated our space for a small dinner party to benefit the Interfaith Social Services. Twenty people will be there and our staff volunteers. We have a chef from the Townsend who's, this is his second or third year doing it. Who provides the food. We also have a musician that comes and it's from six to nine PM. So it's a, it's a very lovely evening in celebration of the folks that have donated a considerable amount of money to Interfaith Social Services.
Okay, wonderful. And this is for September third, right?
September third, right.
All right. Any questions from the board on this event? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the application for one-day liquor license at Holly Hill Farm for Friday, September third, twenty twenty-one, between the hours of six and ten PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call.
Jack, right now.
Corey Evans, I.
Jean Haley Dipple die.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Thank you, Cindy. We hope it's a great event.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Our second is Lenny's Hideaway. They want to continue with outside seating for food and beverage services because of COVID. I am not sure we have anyone from Lenny's. I don't see them, but I did see the info in the packet. Chris?
This is just a continuation of what they're, they're already, the board's already granted to a couple of other restaurants, so they've decided they would like to continue this.
Okay. I will say one of the best things I think to come out of COVID changes is all the outdoor seating and people really enjoy it, so. Does anyone have any questions about this based on what you see in the packet? All right. Do we have a motion to approve a continuation of their COVID outside seating?
So moved.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call with Jack.
Jack, right now.
Corey Evans, I.
Jean Haley Dipple die.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. All right. Glad Lenny's will keep doing up seating. All right. So we are now back. We've gotten those done. We are now back to our RFQ discussions and deliberations. And I just want to first of all, thank all of the lawyers and the firms that have been coming to do these interviews with us the past few weeks. This is really important and I, I know that there are a lot of impressive people that were interviewed. I'm, I think that it's a decision that we all really care about and take seriously. And we obviously want to pick the best representation for our town in all areas. So this is something that I'm really glad we're doing and I know all of us feel the weight of this because it is relevant. So I, I want to just start by opening the discussion generally. I was thinking maybe we could start with some of the, the specialized law firms and discuss them and then move on to general. But I'm open to however we want the discussion to go. So I, again, I, I feel like everyone has thoughts here. I know a lot of us, all of us took notes and have a lot of feelings about this. So I want to make sure we have a productive and respectful discussion. Diane, I saw your hand first and then Corey.
I was just going to suggest if it's appropriate to just get some input from the town manager since ultimately we don't manage council and have very little one-on-one interaction with him. So I would appreciate hearing some of Chris's feedback.
Absolutely. Chris? You deal with, you deal with our council more than anyone, so.
So first off, let me say I really appreciate all the work that, that's gone into this. It was a long process, but I think it's been a good one and I think it's helped us evaluate better what the town needs and got a lot of, a lot of committee members have participated. There's been a lot of good feedback. I think as long and, and, and challenging as that has been, I think it's been, I think it's a good process. And it's something that I think will in the end of the day bear really good fruit. That said, I will say that I think one of the things that served the town well is, is having a couple of councils that might be specialized. I think that, that Attorney Lampke has been a very valuable resource to me and I think to all of you. And I think he kind of plays, I hate to call him a utility player, that kind of downplays his skillset. He's actually very talented, but he plays, he's played a very good, unique role in saying the things. Yeah, pitcher or I have to bet. He, he has a lot of great experience and he's been really valuable in, in some very niche areas. And he's someone that we, you know, we can get a licensing question on really quick and he's seen and done it all from his years on the South Shore. And I would say the same thing in a different way about the labor council. I think Clifford and Kenny's really done a great job for us. I've been very comfortable with them. I think they did a nice job the other night. And I wouldn't recommend that he change. Now again, what all of you decide to do, I'll, I'll, I'll work, I'll work with it. That's your, your role. And I, I don't think, and I don't think you can go wrong. I think you, you, you heard some very good presentations the, the other night and I think, you know, you heard one tonight and I, you know, I've worked with all three of the firms that you're considering for town council and land use. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't put my finger on that in any way. But I would say the one, two, two things I would say is Jim Lampke and I do think Clifford and Kenny, I think they've been very valuable. And, and I think to do, it would serve the town well to continue their services.
Okay, thank you, Chris. I will say I agree with you about Lampke and Clifford and Kenny. I was very impressed with all their presentations. Corey?
I'm not going to jump in if I don't unmute myself. So I'll just jump in with kind of, I've really been going over this as much as possible in my head. And I, I do think that a reset is warranted. I think that, you know, town council, again, according to the Town Manager Act, is something that is, you know, comes from us. It doesn't flow out of the town manager. It is at our level. And I think it's appropriate for us to choose a, a town council that, you know, has all the resources and all the guns necessary for us to be able to, to call on them and to expect them to be, you know, responsive, accurate, you know, well thought out, well reasoned, well written, all the nine yards. So, you know, on that front, you know, I walked away from, from the, the interviews with a very good outlook on bringing in KP Law as our town council. I did think that the, their proposed town council for Brian Mazer, he had a specialty in, in labor relations. And I thought of this in two ways. One, you know, it's good to have town council that isn't an expert in everything. That way they're not trying to take everything on, but we do have one point of contact where we can say, listen, we need you to come here and bring your specialist on X or Y. I think that's a really good structure that can then be extended upon. So I started my thoughts with, you know, really a good reset, starting with Brian would be a good one. However, after having, you know, thought about this a lot and understand that we are also in the middle of some really intense negotiations, I do see it quite a bit of value in keeping Clifford and Kenny as special town, special council for labor. Labor's also, I think, the, the one place where the town board, we really shouldn't be involved in, you know, because there's really only two circumstances where we'd be involved in labor. One, you know, something went wrong on the employee level and that's really not our job. That's Chris's job. Or, or something went wrong with Chris and then it's our job. But it's really, there's no point where we really need to be actively involved with labor law. That's really the one part that's really firmly under Chris's, you know, kind of umbrella. So keeping Clifford and Kenny where they have a relationship there makes a lot of sense to me. Also, I would also keep Jim Lampke as special counsel as needed. I think his, his ability to be, you know, so local, very, you know, down-to-earth with us and really give us timely, simple to understand guidance has been useful. So my, my recommendation, as I sit here, would be to, to bring KP as town council, but remain with Clifford and Kenny for special counsel for labor and Lampke for special counsel for, you know, licensing and, and those pinch permits. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. That's well said. Diane, I'll get to you in a minute. I just want to say that in terms of transitions and transitioning to possible different representation, we are not going to yank things that are currently happening from current representation. We're going to be very careful as a town to make sure this transition happens smoothly and is done well, especially with things that are currently pending. So I just want to make a note of that, that we're, we're being careful here with how to transition this. Diane?
Corey said pretty much everything I was going to say. You know, I think that I, I approached this whole process from the beginning with a recognition that we need to reset a lot of things and, and, and build up some trust and communication amongst, amongst everybody that volunteers for the government and, and this last year has been particularly challenging. So, and I do think there is value and there is also opportunities to run into trouble when you have a, a town council firm, kind of general council that's doing most of the work, but not all of the work. And, and that's been a, a source of friction, I think, in, in the last couple of years on some matters. So while I agree in principle with that, I, I, with retaining one firm to do it all. Again, I think Jim, because of his, you know, his pinch hitter status on specifically with real local licensing issues relating to liquor licenses, et cetera. He hasn't steered us wrong yet and really been helpful. And I, I, I think because of where we are in negotiations and because of the, the challenges that all municipalities are going to face with their employees in terms of collective bargaining agreements and, and new ways of doing business, et cetera. I, I do think we should keep firm with Clifford and Kenny. And so pretty much what Corey said is, is where I'm thinking.
All right. Jean and Jack? Do you have anything you want to offer?
Well, I think that Clifford and Kenny continuing and Jim Lampke, they've done, they've done well. I think we've been well-served by Paul Duranzis. He's kept us out of lawsuits. The ones we've been in, we've won. I know that there's been a very strong movement to remove him for political reasons and for some things that most people in town quite really know the motivation has not to do with their quality of their legal work, but because they were not properly supported of some political issues. And I think it's shameful that we've had officials, been appointed members who have waged a, an unseemly camp, campaign against a very good and decent man and law firm that has served this town very, very, very well. So I think Paul Duranzis has saved us money, kept us out of court. He knows the town inside and out. He's always available to train. He will take, take phone calls or, or, or go to meetings to train boards and commissions. He's invaluable. He's regarded as the dean of municipal law in this state. And I would strongly say that we should keep him. And I, again, as I expressed earlier, the vendetta that's been raised against this good and solid servant of this town is, it's a shameful episode in the history of Cohasset.
Okay. Jean, what are your thoughts? And then I'll respond.
Well, I think just to preface my remarks and I'm, I'm sure that others, I might be thinking something similar. I mean, I did come into this open-minded without sort of the, a decision in mind in terms of who would be ultimately the victor, so to speak. And as many of you know, I was a little hesitant in terms of whether we had enough options before us to really make an informed decision to, particularly as it related to land use council, which I think is particularly important for Cohasset. As we all know, whether it's conservation, ZBA, planning board. I mean, these are the boards where, where we are really potentially contentious.
Could I, could I, I just think it's, I don't want to interrupt you, but I do want to point out, I did mean to say that I, I do think that the land use should be, in my opinion, handled by KP Law.
Okay.
I meant to put that, sorry.
Thanks for clarifying, Jack. Go ahead, Jean.
Okay. And, and so, so with respect to town council, so I think, I think all of them, I think, had different pros and cons, quite frankly, in terms of the different firms. There were certain aspects of each of the firms that maybe I like this thing a little more than that. I like this training approach. I like that billing approach. I liked, you know, Paul's lengthy history and institutional knowledge, as Jack points out. You know, I thought that there were certain questions that Attorney North answered really well, as well as her, her colleagues. And I was very impressed by Attorney Murray. She really had a depth of knowledge and really sort of also a good presentation style too, to supplement that knowledge that I think not only revealed her expertise, but how she would be an aid to all of our volunteers and our elected officials, almost none of whom are municipal lawyers, if any of them are. And that's, you know, that, that's a, that's, that's a heavy lift for anyone who's essentially volunteering their time, including elected officials for that matter. So I do think that she herself, as well as the bench that she brings with her from KP, is really going to serve the town well. And I think that, you know, in terms of town council, playing out the pros and the cons on all of those fronts. I think on balance, it makes sense to go with KP, particularly if we're going to hire them for land use council, just because we will get efficiencies and probably economies of scale by using KP, including if they're dealing with sort of the biggest set of bills that we are likely to have, which is going to be land use. I also like sort of the structure that they put around some of their legal work in terms of responsiveness and getting information back and having a more structured process. And I, I think that, again, all of the firms have very strong lawyers at them. There's no question. And, and KP is one of those. And I think that they have very strong lawyers. I've done some separate webinars through the Municipal Massachusetts Association and KP's been presenting and they've been impressive through their trainings. And I did a training with Attorney Duranzis and he was impressive too. And so we're lucky that we do have so many good options. But I do like the sort of process and structure that KP brings along with the expertise, as well as their free trainings, which I think will be a cost savings for the town as well, which is really important because we are more likely to use those trainings if they are free. And that is something that is important for us. And then finally, and apologize for the rambling, but as it relates to Clifford and Kenny, I, I agree with everyone. I think that if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And so I think with those firms, they've, they've served us well and they clearly have filled that niche pretty well. So I think that, that we should, we should keep them. So to sum up, Clifford, Kenny, I'm in favor. Lampke, I'm in favor. KP, particularly because of, I think, the bench they bring with land use to really help us. And, and finally, I would just say I have looked at work product that all three firms have done, specifically for Cohasset, including legal decisions. And I've been impressed by some of them. Not, not necessarily all the time, but with KP, I, I've seen some impressive work product.
Thank you, Jean. So it does seem like we are especially in agreement here about keeping Clifford and Kenny and Lampke. I will say I echo the thoughts of everyone here. I went into this with a really open mind and there was a lot of talent out of each of these firms. You know, I, I joked to myself on the way out of the first meeting, I wish we could pick our favorites from each and create our own law firm. And that would make it easier, but I really do think we got some thoughtful answers from all of these firms, especially our general council applicants. I, you know, it's, you have to think about what the town has needed in the past and also what it needs in the future. And this is clearly something that a lot of residents care about. Our boards and committees are, are desperate for good council here that they can trust. We want to make sure the town is protected. I will say I, I, I was a little bit torn up until tonight. I think Carolyn Murray's presentation was really impressive tonight and, and that's what made the final decision for me, that I also agree we should go with KP. I think because we're heading into such a need for land use especially, I really like the vibe that KP is bringing in terms of their ability to be team players and especially coming from her. I, I, I'm sensing that they are a better fit for us for the future. Like Jack said, I have utmost respect, especially for Paul Duranzis and all the years he's given to this town. And he is a thoughtful and good man. But in terms of what the future needs, I think we're moving in a little bit of a different direction, especially with things like the free trainings and being able to communicate with, you know, different generations now and different populations and a town that's changing. I think that KP had a little more of a handle on what Cohasset needs in the future. So I will say I, I agree with the KP decision as general and keeping Clifford and Kenny and Jim Lampke. So that, that, that would be my opinion. But I have a lot of respect for Murphy, Hesse and Brooks and Duranzis and they have a lot of talent in, on both of those teams. Diane?
I, I just wanted to add that I had somebody reach out to me from another community, a select board member friend, whose town administrator somehow found out that we were interviewing council and wanted, wanted me to know that Carolyn Murray is just the gold standard of municipal attorneys, particularly with respect to land use. So while I had that little insight going in tonight, like Carrie said, I, I was still, you know, balancing a whole bunch of things, but I think Carolyn proved herself with that very impressive, you know, presentation. And, and again, the, I think the, the, there's a lot of people in the Commonwealth that have had, have, have nothing but good things to say about her too. So I'm very comfortable with not knowing her. I know a little more about the KP attorneys that we met with as well. But anyway, so I feel good about that. I wanted to share that.
Okay, Corey, was that a hand raise or you're just moving? Okay. Any other thoughts in general? I appreciate everyone being honest here and sharing their opinions. This is not easy to do, but I think we all recognize that it's an important decision to make, even if we don't all completely agree. Trying to read all your non-verbals.
Sorry to resume.
I know.
What, what's the, I mean, what's the, what's the next steps? I mean, it seems like we have a little bit of a consensus here.
Yeah, so I think that we can just make a motion to Diane.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think we should make a motion on, on each specific firm, but my. But my, I guess my question is also to Chris and, and Carrie, perhaps just in terms of like literally what is the next step? The next step I assume would be to go forward and work out some kind of an agreement slash contract and then bring it back to the board for ratification.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they've all provided us fees and base agreements and they'll come back with a retainer agreement and it'll go back to you and, and then there'll be a, a transition discussion where there is such a thing to have. And they'll come back with a plan to get to all of it. So yeah, this is how it's going to work.
And again, we want this to be a smooth transition for the town, which is why we wanted to get this done, making sure that the town is protected as we're transitioning, if the transition's happening. Corey.
Yeah. So, so Chris, this vote really wouldn't be to necessarily award or approve the contract because we haven't gotten the contract yet. We'd have to award, I mean, it all really would be the, the phrasing of this step, would you say?
I guess it would be authorize retainer agreements to be prepared for, you know, firm X for Y. You know, and then, and then bring them back to you by the 24th for sure for ratification. Or approval, I should say.
So I guess we should do three separate motions here, but all the same wording, pretty much about retaining agreements just based on the specialties in general counsel.
And one logistic question.
Yeah.
Sorry, not raising my hand.
You can do it non-verbally too, just raise your hand up. Wave.
We probably already have agreements with Clifford, Kenny and Lampke, right? So would we be just moving?
I guess you could just extend those if you wanted to.
Narrow issues.
But I could, I'm gonna, I'll bring them back to you anyway. I mean, even the ones that are just, I'll bring them back to you for a formal vote anyway. You want to transition from either one of them, it sounds like. So I'll bring those back anyway for you to vote for net, for another, what is it, two year period? I think you want me to do this for.
I was gonna ask that too. Is it two or three or what period do we want to do? Three?
My, my recommendation would be three. The town manager's on three. Kind of it would allow an elected official to have a say rather than have it kind of, you know, skip over generations. And I would also just, I would recommend that we just move all three. Just that we have a date and a time where we're very clear. We don't have to go back and try to find different contracts and stuff like that.
And just to be clear about these, they're always terminable at will by the board. They're not, you know, a professional agreement. So if the board decides it wants to go in a different direction, it can. So it's not like you're locked in for three years or something like that, right? I mean, if something weird happened, right? The firm dissolved or something like that. So that's all, all legal retainers are.
Okay. Jack?
Yeah, I, I think it's important that we have new contracts and new appointments. There's been a history of kind of a lackadaisical approach to hiring attorneys and the Town Manager Act very clearly says that is the sole prerogative of the select board. So every attorney that's hired needs to have a specific appointment. And it also needs to have a separate and specific vote of the board of selectmen to appoint them for a very specific thing. So we should do that. As far as the here and now, we could certainly have a sense of the select board as to what the decision is. And it's instruct the town manager to prepare the appropriate paperwork. But we do need a very specific appointment for every separate attorney. It shows exactly the scope of work and what they're appointed to, because that is what is required by the Town Manager Act, which has kind of been lackadaisically enforced up to now.
Diane?
I, I was just gonna suggest I make a, a motion and see if we can start this going. So I, I would like to move that we appoint Lampke Law LLC with Jim Lampke primary as special counsel, subject to negotiation of a, a formal agreement with the town.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Corey, seconded. Roll call.
Well, I think we need to amend that, that they, as to what.
So you're saying.
It, it needs to specifically say what is being hired to do.
I mean, I think we were saying he's a very good pinch hitter, although I know he specializes in certain things, like, you know, certain liquor licenses, for example. So you.
He's been hired for licensing.
Okay. So do you want to amend the motion, Jack, to say?
I will amend the motion to add he's appointed for licensing.
Okay. Just point of order. Chris, is that, or do we think that's too specific in case we need him for?
Well, if you need him for something else, you can always just authorize him for something else. I mean, it would come back to all of you to say, yeah, we need him for this or that.
I just don't want to prohibit him if we need him for something else.
Yeah. And could we, could, could we clarify licensing specific to, you know, I don't know, like restaurant liquor licensing and permitting or something?
I think licensing and permitting is, I think licensing and permitting is sufficient.
Okay.
We don't have to overly, I mean, just make it very clear.
We, it's hard. We don't want to be too vague and we don't want to be too specific. All right. So licensing and permitting, I think, could work. Corey?
Yes.
I, I was just thinking, I mean, you know, we, we have a history with Jim. I don't, you know, he said very explicitly, he's not looking to, to pick up more work. I'm, I'm, I'm not quite sure if there's utility in limiting it because, you know, he's not, he's not going to become a town counsel. So, you know, I, I, I'm comfortable with just saying for a special counsel and just leaving it at that, because I think Jim was very clear about what he's interested in.
Well, Corey, the point isn't that he's, isn't going to do that. The point is to take a look at the language of the Town Manager Act and have whatever actions that we take to be consistent with an interpretation of that. So we don't run into a situation down the line where he starts doing something else. And we say, well, we didn't authorize that because he's specifically authorized. So.
No.
Need to be clear.
No, I, I understand. I just, for this, I understand we can put restrictions on it, but we don't necessarily need to. I would certainly put a restriction on Clifford and Kenny for labor counsel, but just out with historically how we've used Jim and for what he's said. You know, I do think there's utility in saying, okay, if we need a special case, XYZ and Jim's worked on this before. I just, I don't think it's necessary to limit him because he's not gonna, we're not going to go to him for like land use. We're not going to go to him for, you know, stuff that he's not our, you know, he hasn't done before in the past. So I certainly understand the concern, but for Jim's case, I think it's, it's a, not necessarily a concern. We need to make a, need to just kind of, you know, circumscribe around.
I, I don't even think we're, I think we're all on the same page here. I think we're just, I, I'm not sure this debate matters, I guess, in terms of how this is going to play out, but I think we need to vote on Jack's amendment here adding licensing, licensing and permitting or licenses and permits as specific language. All right. So let's vote on that and then we'll.
When it orders, it hasn't been seconded.
I, I was, well, right, I'm gonna say, so let's vote on this amendment if there's a second and then we'll go back to the overall motion.
I'd second.
Okay, there's a second. All right. Roll call vote.
Yeah, great. Nye.
Corey Evans, snake. I don't think it's necessary.
Jean Haley Dipple, die.
Diane Kennedy, nay.
I'm torn, I'm torn. I, I don't think it matters. I'll vote, I'll vote aye. We can put it in. Licensing and permitting. All right. So now we're back to the overall vote on Lampke Law.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Hold on, let's make sure there's a second. Do we have a, hold the, Jack, hold on, hold on.
I'll second it.
All right. All right. So, so moved. We have a second overall vote on, all right, Jack Creighton, aye. Okay.
Corey Evans, aye.
Jean Haley Dipple, die.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye. Okay. All right. So now I think we need to move on for a motion for Clifford and Kenny. So what language would we like to put in for Clifford and Kenny?
Labor.
Yeah.
Labor and employment, if I would say, because it's.
I have labor and employment written down too. So that was.
Want me to, want me to try the, the motion? I'll try the motion to appoint Clifford and Kenny LLP as labor and employment, special counsel for labor and employment.
Do you have a second?
Subject to an agreement with the town satisfactory to the board.
Second.
We have a second roll call vote.
Jack. Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Jean Haley Dipple, die.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye. Okay. Now, I'm not sure about the exact language for general counsel that we would want to do for the next motion, since it is going to be more general. Any suggestions before we make the motion? Any discussion on this? Corey?
Uh, the question is, I guess, do we want to explicitly or specifically, each, either way, exclude certain things or do we want to just say this is, this is general counsel? You know, we, we have authorized these special councils if necessary, but KP Law, if there's something that KP can handle in labor and employment, we're comfortable with that. You know, I think I'm comfortable with giving them, you know, town council and the whole breadth of things, not excluding them is, I think, the way I would probably phrase it.
Yeah, I would, I would prefer to be less specific for this one, I think, just saying overall general counsel, but. Diane?
I, I would recommend adding, I mean, if the board thinks, I, I think we should specify land use.
Okay.
But.
So are you saying not? Something along the lines of move to appoint KP Law as our town's general counsel, including with respect to land use and environmental matters without any exclusion as to labor, employment and licensing.
Could we just say any and all matters? I mean.
I just assume general, it could include land use and everything, but I do know that we specifically want them to do a lot with the land use. I just don't know if it's necessary or if that's protocol.
Yeah, I, I, my, I was just specifying it because it is such a big deal and it is something we spent a lot of time really considering the best in class.
Right. No, I know.
It, it, it with, and I wouldn't add the exclusions, but so maybe we're, maybe we're good to, you know, just say general counsel without.
I mean, I know that KP has gotten the message sent that we care a lot about land use, especially because tonight, but.
Here's another way of looking at it. The way the RFQ was structured, it asked for submissions or responses for general counsel for land use and environmental separately, for labor and employment.
Yeah.
And for special counsel. So.
KP Law filed individual ones. Yeah, fine. Yeah.
All right. So maybe we, I'm fine with putting it in if people think that's best specifying it, but obviously assuming that they're for other all general things. Yeah, Jack?
Yeah, I think the in deference to the boards and commissions who very strongly feel that this needs to be a separate or emphasized legal category, that we ought to appoint them for land use and then separately appoint them for the general counsel position. And, and also to be consistent with the RFQ.
So Jack, are you, to clarify, are you saying you think we need to have two separate agreements? Cause I don't know.
No, or we, I just think somehow we could wordsmith into that, the, the dual responsibilities.
All right. So let's just get some wording here for general and then including land use and environmental, it seems like.
General land, including land use and environmental. Carrie, I couldn't have said it better.
I've got the list in front of me, if you want.
Go ahead, Corey. Corey, do you want to make the motion?
Jean, did you have something? I'm sorry.
Oh. I was gonna say, including without limitation.
Okay, yes, of course. Yes. Well, I'll just read everything.
Almost like you can tell you're a lawyer, Jean.
Um, so, so I would like to move that we appoint KP Law as the town's counsel in these specific areas, general town counsel, litigation, labor and employment law, environmental and land use law, as well as special counsel needs, including but not limited to those areas, pending the approval of an appropriate retainer agreement to be, to be brought in front of the board and voted upon.
Okay. Is there a second? Or, and then any discussion? Yes.
Just a question because Corey did include labor and employment.
Yep, I was gonna.
And that was, that was intentional?
I did exclude, it was intentional. I wrote the whole list to not exclude any, any areas. If, if, if the board feels like it's worth an amendment, I will amend the motion if, you know, I'm comfortable doing that.
I think because we just appointed that. And if we're looking at the RFQ, like I want to put one name next to it.
Okay. Then I withdraw my motion and if it's okay with the chair, I'd like to refile the motion.
Yes. Try.
I would like to move, strike two, that we appoint KP Law as, as town counsel for these areas, general town counsel, litigation, environmental and land use, as well as special counsel when necessary, pending the approval of a retainer agreement to be brought in front of the board and at a later date.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Good work, everybody.
All right. Yeah. Roll call vote, starting with Jack.
Yeah, Creighton, nay.
Corey Evans, aye.
Jean Haley Dipple, die.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye. Okay. I really appreciate us having a good discussion on that and our respectful discussion. And I think that the town is in good hands based on that, but that was a lot of work that those votes just symbolized. So thank you to everyone and thank you to everyone in town who also helped offer feedback and give their questions and submit questions, especially our boards and committees that helped with that. I think that this is going to be a, a very positive group of legal counsel for, for our town. So thank you to everyone. Yes, Diane.
I just wanted to make sure we acknowledged Michelle Leary and her incredible hard work getting this all together.
Especially Michelle, who went through so many drafts of questions and getting these out and getting all the applicants. And yeah, Michelle was a rock star for this whole process. So thank you, Michelle. All right. Speaking of the importance of boards and committees, moving on to this chunk of our agenda, which is trying to finish a couple more interviews and getting some appointments done. The first one, and the one that's probably going to take us the longest, but it's also really new and important, our school facilities committee. We have spent a lot of time doing interviews here. I believe we have one more interviewee tonight in the audience that we're going to interview briefly. And then I'm hoping we can move on to vote on this, just because the interviews have taken a big chunk of our time. And I know this committee is really important and wants to get going and wants these appointees to be there. This is especially important too, because the three people we appoint to this are going to be really the liaison for us, the select board in terms of what's happening for this committee. So it, it's important that we get appointees that I think are going to be responsive to us. And I just want to say for anyone watching too, and then I'll get to you, Marty. We've had incredible talent and excitement and energy in people that have applied to this. And we've had over, you know, 18 people interested. We haven't interviewed all of them, but we've had a lot of people interested. And I'm hoping that those who do not get on this committee will stay involved and hopefully be good fits for other committees too. So it's really popular and competitive committee, which is exciting, but you know, we, we have to pick three tonight. So before we do that, this is Martin Nie, Marty Nie. Hi, Marty. Can unmute yourself.
Hello there. Can you hear me?
So yes, you get the, we did a whole separate day of interviews for the rest of our applicants, but you get the prime time one.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
So just very briefly, what we asked our other applicants is for you to just introduce yourself and briefly tell us why you're interested in this committee and why you think your skillset and talents would be a good fit for school facilities.
Sure. My name is Martin Nie. I live at 109 Atlantic Avenue in Cohasset. And I've been a resident of Cohasset this fall, going on 28 years. I have two children that have gone through Cohasset schools, K through eight. A recent graduate this spring, my son and my daughter, who will be a senior this year. And both of my children have been extremely well-served by the Cohasset schools. And I believe they've prepared them well to enter their early adulthood. And that's important to me. And I think it's a very important element of the town. And it also seems to evoke a lot of passion, as it should. But I think that somewhere there's going to be some important decisions that need to be made. And those decisions need to be based on data. And there's a lot of assumptions that will come along that need to be tested. In the course of my career, I've, I've spent my entire career as a blend between working in the private sector and the public sector. I began my career working in the State House as legislative aide. I began my career, uh, working in the state house as legislative aide, uh, where I spent seven years and, uh, learned a lot and, uh, would highly recommend, uh, that role for any young person, uh, starting out in their career. From there, I went on to a number of different appointments, but, uh, I managed public outreach for the Big Dig, uh, for seven and a half years after that. Half as a consultant, uh, for the joint venture, Bechtel Parsons Brinkerhoff, and, uh, the latter half, uh, as a state employee representing the administration. So I feel these experiences give me, uh, the ability to, to bridge the gap and understand that somewhere there's an ultimate solution. There's always limits on financial, uh, ability. And there's also limits on, you know, what the public can withstand and support. And, uh, so I view the role of this committee as, as finding that balance, that ultimate solution. And I think that, um, you know, in doing so, I would apply the lessons that I've learned over my career, which are to understand the needs first and foremost. You know, institutions in municipalities or where have you have a lot of assumptions about what they need. They know what they need. Nobody knows what they need better. There's assumptions that are applied to what the solution will be to give them what they need. So I view this committee's role as learning to the best of their ability, what it is that the school facilities actually need to support. The, the programmatic, uh, goals of the, uh, school facilities. And those goals are not made by the, this committee. But they, they need to be understood by this committee, in, in my opinion. And I think the most important thing that the committee would be able to offer is, is a process, that would listen to those needs and also listen to the fiscal constraints in the other interests in the town. And, uh, you know, through a public process, be able to, uh, allow a healthy, transparent debate, uh, based on, on data. And, uh, you know, we all know that everyone doesn't always agree, but, um, it's one thing to feel that your views have been listened to and they've been considered very carefully. And the decision was made to go the other way, than it is to feel, nobody's listening to me. They're just, you know, doing what they want, so. You know, I think that this committee's role would be to, to find that balance and bring people together in a solution-oriented way. That when you have all sides of an important issue, trying to solve the problem, generally you solve that problem. But when some of those interests feel that they're not being listened to or that, you know, they're never going to get what they want, and they're pushing against it, it becomes very difficult to solve the problem. So my goal would be to get everyone focused and, uh, and agree that we're, we're going to solve this. So those, those are some of my ideas. And, uh, if anyone has any specific questions, fire away.
That was a very good response and about all the time I think we need from you, but does anyone have any quick follow-ups for Marty? No, all right. Thank you so much, Marty. We really appreciate your interest in this.
Thank you for your time. I, I appreciate it and, uh, I look forward to, uh, whatever decision is made.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, bye now.
All right, bye. Okay, so we're finally done with these interviews. And I know we've talked about several ways to do this because we've had so many applicants. Hold on, I want to make sure Marty's out. Okay, all right. In fairness to all the applicants, Marty's gone. All right. So I, I, there are several different options we could do, and I want to hear what the board thinks on this. We could all give, you know, who we're thinking about as top three. I'm, I'm assuming there's going to be a lot of overlap. Or we could have a board member propose a slate and we can vote on that. Again, I'm hoping to keep all of our deliberation and feedback here positive. There's a lot of talent. There's a lot of good people applying. Some people I think that applied might be better for other committee and board options that I think we're going to try to recruit them for, so. You know, I'm hoping we can keep it positive with who we think would be a best fit, but just in terms of general deliberation, would we like to move ahead with giving our, our, our top here for deliberation? Or would someone like to propose a slate? Or how do you think we would like to do this? Any thoughts? Corey?
I mean, I'm, I've got notes on some topics. I'm happy to throw them out there and just, you know, I'm not sure if it's so efficient, but just kind of bounce things around. You know, so, so a few candidates that really stood out to me, I mean, Alethia was, um, Alethia Harney was, you know, she came into this, uh, with a communications background. She's got municipal government experience, uh, especially the budgeting process. Uh, and, you know, this is going to be, so much of this process is going to be, and we've talked about a goal for this board being communications. Um, so having somebody on the board, on that board that, um, you know, is engaging and can, can really be the, be the voice and the, and the passion of getting this to where it needs to go, I think would be very useful. But I, I also, uh, was, uh, very impressed. I'm going to have four here that way. But, um, I was very impressed with, uh, Jen Lesky. She was on the CEF. She's got great grant experience. Um, so there's a lot of institutional knowledge she has there. I did also want to, um, point out, um, you know, Jason Earls, uh, made a bunch of really impressive points about, he's been involved with youth soccer and baseball. And his background is in, he said it specifically in, you know, maintaining facilities and, and understanding what they need. So he was certainly a standout, uh, you know, individual for this. And then finally, um, you know, I, I guess my fourth is, is, uh, Martin Nie that we just met. He's on the 143 TV board. I've met with him multiple times and he, uh, I know he's been involved in other municipal projects as well. Uh, he just, uh, he's already brought to my, to the 143 board, uh, uh, a perspective um, that I think would really be useful, uh, on the facilities committee, as he really said it clearly. You know, there's going to be limitations, there's going to be hard decisions, and there's going to have to be really, really in-depth understanding of where we need to go. Uh, and he's got that background, so, um, I know we only get three, but those are four people that really popped into my mind. Thank you.
Thank you for getting us started, Corey. Diane, your hand was up next.
Um, I think we can, we'll start to find some consensus, at least on some candidates. So, um, Alethia Harvey was, um, top of my list because she does work for the state treasurer's office and, and has the communications experience. I think that just understanding how the state funding can and would work is, is really going to be critical to any, anything that the school facilities committee, um, brings up. Um, I, I am a longtime fan of Marty Nie. I think his experience in, in communications, uh, he was, um, one of the lead communications professionals, hired by, for the Mass, um, for the Big Dig project and just being able to understand and have two, two feet in the communications world, um, between public, projects and, uh, and the public, um, I think is really going to be something critical, especially as we start to socialize options to town meeting, um, and he's been in town quite some time. Jason Earls was also on my list for the reasons Corey said, and then Doug Schultz, um, particularly appealed to me. He is, um, former Marine, as I think like four or five of them were, which was pretty impressive.
Shout out to the Marines for.
Yeah, he signed an email to me when he sent his application is, you know, like, um, happy to serve, summer five. And his, his professional life is, um, working for Shawmit Design. He's a civil engineer and they do public building construction. And I think somebody with that, that has built public buildings and has built schools is going to bring a level of, um, understanding to, you know, the entire, um, conversation. So, uh, again, there's four that, um, stood out to me. Again, they're all impressive. You know, the ones that said they really want this committee and nothing else, I put little asterisks, like, we have to get her for this. So, um, anyway, this was a, a really wonderful, um, group of people, so I think we can't go wrong.
By the way, I'm tallying here. We already have two votes for three different candidates, so I'm tallying all the names people bring up. Jean?
So, at the risk of an unhappy household, because I know my husband applied.
Yeah, you're in a tougher position than the rest of us.
I'm, I'm not voting for him, sorry. But I, I still love him. But, but it's supposed to show that we have many talented people who in fact applied for this committee. And I do think that when you look at the charge of the committee, which is set in our bylaws, it really truly is to assess the facility's condition and adequacy. I'm not sure if it's fair to put on the committee, even though it will obviously be a huge issue. The financing and the outreach and all of that, I'm not sure that's necessarily their role, although to the extent that they can help play a role in that, that would obviously be wonderful. I do think that that is going to be the role of the school committee and the select board as well to facilitate that. Um, and really like, you know, look at all the information and, and, and make the right choices and then, um, socialize them. So, um, I, I'm also looking at it from the perspective of who can do that needs analysis and study the adequacy and the condition, like literally do what's in our bylaw.
Right.
And so for those reasons, I, I had the same choices, um, I guess in the same order, that, that Diane has with Marty, um, you know, sort of being the fourth, simply because I do think that the three others, bringing the state treasurer experience, which is critical above all else, um, as we know, uh, both in terms of adequacy of conditions, because the state treasurer does, you know, through the MBSA program, make those assessments, understanding how that plays out, I think will be important. So let the, but also Doug, Schultz and Jason Earl, I mean, they both have super on-point experience, which, you know, right now, we don't have a budget for anyone that, right now, to assist with school facilities too. So I do think it's going to be important to make sure we have the professionals and, and, you know, we know too that um, the moderator also has three choices too, so to the extent that.
Yep.
You know, we have.
And he hasn't chosen yet. He'll be, yeah, he'll be choosing after us.
Yep, yep. And so, you know, I could, um, you know, I think, I, and, and I think Marty, I think brought up a lot of important points about looking not only at assessing the conditions, but also thinking about them from a pragmatic and consensus building standpoint. And what I hear in that, and maybe this is not what he means, but this is what I'm hearing, is that it's important to have options. And it's important to vet those options and really give credence to, you know, when people say things like, let's renovate versus rebuild, really truly have good data and good understanding of that and be able to respond in a way that, you know, makes the other side, quote unquote, that he was talking about, feel like their concerns have been fully addressed, um, and, and, and analyzed. And so I do, I do think, and we've seen this with town hall, obviously, that that is going to be a recurring theme in Cohasset, um, including with this project. And so I thought that was, um, insightful and important. And so, um, I'm hoping maybe our four choices will make their way onto the committee somehow.
Well said. And again, this is very much a needs analysis, and we want to make sure we have people on there that are going to figure out what the needs are, analyze it and then figure out how to move forward, obviously. Okay, so we're definitely having some overlap. Jack, what do you think?
I'm just sitting, uh, listening, um, I found out and chew very interesting. I understand his experience and dealing with stuff in the city of Boston is very challenging, so he might have an interesting perspective. I've known Marty for Marty Nie for a long period of time, and I think he is very good at bridging that gap between the public and private. And, and I think that he will help the school facilities be more effective because you, no matter what you may think, if you can't get it implemented and if you don't have the skills to integrate. So, uh, at this point, I'm listening to everybody else, but those two jump up at me, for me right now.
And I will say, I really kind of had a top five list and they've all been mentioned, at least once, so we're definitely on the same page. I was a hundred percent set on Alethia. I think her entire background would be a really good fit for this, just like everyone else said. I think she's a great candidate. Jason Earls, I was very impressed with his background. I feel like his, his, his ability to understand building facilities and especially the engineering aspect with his engineering background is, is really powerful. I also was impressed with Jen Lesky and Jen Boylan and Doug Schultz. But I also then was almost convinced by Marty Nie again tonight. So those were, that was my top star list of people that I thought were the best fit for this. It looks like, it looks like right now that we have enough votes for Alethia and Marty. And then it looks like, actually, a- and Jason Earls, looks like the, the three that have the most votes or the most mentions or shout-outs as of right now.
I'd make that motion.
Okay, hold on, Corey has his hand up and then.
Oh, I'm sorry, Corey.
Then I'll let you make the motion.
Yeah, no, I, I think we're in a good place. I only wanted to bring up, uh, you know, I flagged Jen because she has a lot of, uh, school administration experience. Jen Lesky, I'm sorry. Uh, so we've got a lot of builders and a lot of communications, but maybe, you know, I just, and of course, there are other appointments here and, and maybe that's, you know, and I, I think what Jean said is really accurate, that our role here may be of analysis. But, um, just the value of maybe having someone that understands not just the building, but how the buildings work internally could be helpful. But I, I'm not, you know, I'm just pointing that out for other people that are listening as well. I do think that our consensus is a good one, so.
No, I think that's fair. I think that's fair. I do think Alethia brings some of that with, she has kids in schools and I, I think she has a lot of experience with interacting with the school, so I do think that she has some of that, Corey, but I agree with you. That's a very good point. I also was very impressed with Jen Lesky. A- again, based on my tally here, the, the most mentions or shout-out are for Marty Nie, Jason Earls and Alethia. Is it Henry or Harvey? I think I wrote it. I've seen.
Harney.
Harney. Me, Harney, okay, I've seen. Sorry, Alethia, we'll make sure we spell it right. I've seen two different spellings. Those are the, the top vote-getters, but.
Okay, you want me to make the motion?
Jean has her hand up now. Hold on, Jack.
Well, just to respond to Corey, so three people already have been appointed from the school committee side. And, and they, I would assume are going to be pretty focused on the pro- programmatic administration side. Working with the administration too, and, and Marty has had children who just went through the school system as well. And, um, he seems to have a good sense of the programmatic.
Good points, okay.
Okay, so Jack, now you can make the motion. I believe we're moving to Alethia, Jason and Marty.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we point Marty Nie, Alethia Harmony and Jason Earls to the school facilities committee.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any more discussion? I don't think. All right, roll call, starting with Jack.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Jeanne Hilly Dipple, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Corey Thompson, aye. Exciting. This is going to be a great committee. Congrats to those three. We will be reaching out to you tomorrow.
We'll also reach out to everyone else for other committees.
Exactly. Well, we're, yeah, the, the rest of you, watch out, we're coming to get you on other things too.
We're not letting you escape.
Including Alex, Jean's lovely, huh? Is he?
Giving you the looks?
All right, th- these next ones shouldn't be as much deliberation. These next ones should be pretty easy to do. We'll see. All right, so first one, council on elder affairs. We have three full members that I believe are in need of being reappointed. That is Diane Carter, Paul Kierce and Taffy Knothnagle, and then one associate member, Sarah Livermore.
So moved.
All right, do we have a second?
Second, second.
All right, and these are, and these are three-year terms?
I believe so. Chris, can you confirm? Or Tracy, I believe they are. Yeah, I, I think they are.
Including the associate. Including the associate.
Yes, I believe they all are.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So we have a motion and a second roll call.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Jean Haley Dipple, duh.
Sorry. Diane Kennedy, I.
Corey Thompson, I. Okay. Open space and rec. So we have a citizen at large for Deirdre Riley, Adam Norman and Mary Ann Wetherald for open space and rec. Any discussion on this? Yes.
No, just, just confirmation. Are there three citizen at large positions?
Yes.
So it's, it's just the three.
Yes. So all three of those names for a citizen at large.
Three for one position.
No, no, each, there's three citizen at large positions, Jean. So each of them would, would be a citizen at large on open space and rec. All right. Do we have a motion for Deirdre, Adam and Mary Ann?
So moved.
Okay. So we have a second. All right. Roll call.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Jean Haley Dipple, duh. Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. I know this is a lot of roll call votes, but we're getting good stuff done. Okay. Alternative energy committee. We still have a couple of positions available, but we do have Steve Winter to appoint tonight, who we all know has done a fantastic job on there so far. But shout out to the community and everyone. We still need people for alternative energy. So this would be for Steve Winter.
Enthusiastically recommend Steve Winter to the, uh, alternative energy committee.
Okay.
I guess it's a motion. I move to appoint Steve Winter to the alternative energy commission.
We have a second.
Second.
All right. Roll call vote.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Jean Haley Dipple, duh. Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. All right. The master plan implementation committee, which we heard a very thorough and interesting presentation from Katie Dugan last week. So I'm going to read the reps here. It looks like we still need a couple of them, but we have a few to appoint. So for the planning board rep, we have Amy Glassmire. For harbor committee, we have Tim Davis and for historical commission, we have Julia Gleason. We still need people for open space and affordable housing steering committee. So this would be appointing those three names to master plan or implementation.
Okay. I'll move that we appoint, um, Amy Glassmire as a rep from the planning board. Tim Davis from harbor committee, Julia Gleason from the historical commission, um, to the master plan implementation committee.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? I don't think. All right. Roll call vote.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I. Sorry to get it.
Fine. Jean Haley Dipple, duh.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. All right. Moving on to harbor committee. So for this, we have one CSCR rep, that's Susan Bryant. Uh, one CMI rep, Lisa Hewitt Dick. We still need some, two commercial fishermen. And then for three full members, we have Tim Davis to reappoint. So Susan Bryant, Tim Davis and Lisa Hewitt Dick for harbor.
Are you sure Tim is still interested in this?
I mean, he's listening right now. I have a feeling he is.
I'm just kidding. He, he's not at all concerned about the harbor. Um, I'll move that we appoint Susan Bryant as a rep from CSCR, Lisa Hewitt Dick for, as a rep from CMI. And, um, and Tim Davis as citizen at large to the harbor committee.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call vote. Jack.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Jean Haley Dipple, duh. Diane Kennedy, I.
Okay. That is done. Okay. So yes, Diane.
Yeah, I just, I, I just wanted to say just for general purposes, um, that the, because these are select board appointed committees, um, and, and per our bylaws and charges, these all have to be residents of Cohasset, which is why it's really difficult to find commercial fishermen. Um, cause A, there's few and, and B, because many of them don't live in town. Um, so it's, it, you know, I, as I've told, um, Tim Davis, who's chair, it's incumbent upon all of us, A, to do the best we can, but to encourage the, the fisher, fishermen to participate in the meetings. And I know that they do. And I know Tim's, it works really carefully with them, but it is a really difficult role to play. And as we look at governance, and I know the, um, harbor committee is looking to, to raise a, um, a governance, uh, subgroup, subcommittee, which is looking for members. So anybody who's looking for, to serve, um, that governance committee will look at really how we can structure and get the best representation at the, around the table on, on various committees. And there might be ways of doing that without going through the formal committee process for non-resident fishermen.
Cause we do have a lot of fishermen that live in surrounding towns and it is really important to get feedback from them and let them have a voice. So that was very well said, Diane. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Moving on to the housing authority, we have finished interviews for that. And I would like to make a motion that we appoint Virginia Jenny Najmi as that appointed position.
Second.
All right. It's been motioned and second in a roll call vote or any discussion on that.
And again, she served before and she's really terrific.
Thank you to our applicants for that as well. All right. Roll call vote. Jack.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Jean Haley Dipple, duh. Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. All right. Making our way down the list, our PEB committee, post-employment benefits. All right. For that, we have four appointees, I believe. Those four are Paul Carlson, Tim Davis, Mark Maggi and Katie Dugan.
So moved.
Okay. All right. Roll call. Jack.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
My only point on this one is I would be, I although acknowledge that Mark Maggi has also applied for advisory um, committee. And if he is appointed to that, then he cannot be on this per the bylaws. Um, and so yes, I, with that caveat.
Okay. No, I assumed he, he, he knew that, but we can remind him.
I believe he knows and he has not yet been appointed to advisory. So that, that could be another opportunity for another person to serve. So I on the slate. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. And Carrie Thompson, I for that. All right. Zoning by law working group, another important one. And for the working groups for the select board appointees, because none of these have been finished. I think it is appropriate to continue with the people we've had. So just a note on that. Jack was on this last year and Jack, I would love for you to stay on this if you're willing.
I'm actively still involved.
Okay. So that I, Jean, I do know you've also expressed interest though. So I would have no problem appointing both of you to it if that's something you want, Jean. But I do know we want to keep Jack on that.
Well, maybe I could be a, a backup for Jack if.
Or you're also welcome to just attend.
Yeah, I might just.
You know what I mean? Without the official appointment. Okay. So wanted to make sure you both felt you were being heard for that. Okay. So for this working group, here's the list for master plan implementation committee. We have Katie Dugan and Cassie Malatesta. For planning board, we have Tom Callahan and Paul Kaleri. For ZBA, we have Woody Chidick. For open space, we have Peter Peskatory. For select board, our very own Jack Creighton. For buildings and inspections, ex officio would be Jen Orem. And the building commissioner, zoning officer, ex officio would be John Howen.
So I'll, I'll move the slate of appointees as opposed to the ex officios, um, because so in other words, Katie, Kathy, Tom.
Tom, Paul, Woody.
Peter. Yep. So moved.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seems like a sigh, Jean.
I was just trying to remember everyone's names.
I know. It's, all right.
Why you say so moved and move it quickly?
Any discussion? All right. Roll call, starting with Jack.
That crazy discussion. Sorry. But, um, we, we, um, uh, the, the, the chair of MPIC has, um, wants to make a comment, I believe. So.
See that? Okay. I thought she wanted to go back to PEB. I was going to go back to PEB in a minute. Um.
Um, do you want to promote?
Katie, I'm just going to promote you because I think you can explain this better. I'm not, I don't know if you're asking for PEB or MPIC or this or both. Help us, Katie. What are, what are we doing wrong here?
Nothing too big. So, hi.
We're trying, we're trying. Okay. So let's finish, let's, we'll go back to PEB in a minute. Let's talk about this zoning by law working group first, because we're on it.
So from a procedural perspective, my only request is that we, you actually changed the underlying charge of the zoning by law working group to now have seven members. Cassie joined master plan implementation committee last August as a replacement for a citizen at large. And at the time she wanted to dip her toe in the water about trying out the zoning by law working group. As it turned out, she did more than dip her toe. She dove right in. And so my request is that this year we change the charge, the zoning by law working group to have two liaisons from master plan implementation committee to make us a working group of seven. Two from master plan implementation, two from planning board, one from ZBA, one from open space, one from the select board, plus our two ex officio. So my request is only that you approve the, the amended charge and then make the appointments.
Thank you for clarifying that. All right. So I don't know if we can do a motion all at once. So we don't like to do one roll call vote?
Yeah, that's make a motion to amend the charge and make the appointments as.
So let's move that we amend the charge to include two members of, from MPIC for the zoning by law working group. And then nominate for all of the members here for MPIC, Katie Dugan. Obviously you, Cassie Malatesta, planning board, Tom Callahan, Paul Kaleri, ZBA, Woody Chidick, open space, Peter Peskatory and select board, Jack. Creighton. All right, Corey.
Are, are we, I mean, uh, since, are we allowed to vote on a, on a change of a charge at this point? I know it was, I know we've got all the, Katie emailed, uh, uh, provided us the change of charge, but if it's not in our agenda, would it be appropriate for us to change the charge at this juncture?
I thought about that and I was going to try to see if we could get away with it. But it's a valid question.
I mean, it's, it says in the charge, the master plan implementation committee will meet annually with the class of select board to review and revise the working group structure and recommend a slate of candidates. So, I mean, it's in the original charge. So for me.
We're, we're reviewing right now. I mean, it, it's a valid point, Corey. I, you know, does anyone have any problem doing this right now? If they do, we can move it to a further agenda.
Would it slow anything down? I mean, technically we should be posting that we're, we're reviewing a charge and making amendments to it. But I, you know, I mean, depend, we could do it in a couple of weeks and, you know, Cassie could still attend meetings. I mean, it's not, not that, I don't think anything will materially change. I hate to push it off, but it really technically should be a, as a posted agenda item to charge to, you know.
That's why I had it in the packet. That's why it was given to you guys last Thursday or Wednesday.
Sorry, but it should have been on the agenda.
It could have been on the.
That's fine.
All right.
A- again, it's not going to change how we work. So I, it doesn't matter to me. You just, guys just have to.
Well, I think we, we do need to do it by the, by the procedure that's required.
All you old followers. Okay. All right. So in the meantime, can we, I guess, appoint all the other names and then wait and do Cassie with the change for next week? So we can at least get the rest appointed.
Yes. So I move the, I move the aforementioned slate of candidates for the zoning by law, uh, working group. Um, absent Cassie Malatesta.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call vote.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Jean Haley Dipple, duh. Diane Kennedy, I.
Corey Thompson, I. Okay. Now Katie, you also said that were we supposed to stagger terms for PEB?
Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, the, you guys amended the charge in on February 23rd of this year. And it says the Cohasset, um, member shall be appointed by the Cohasset select board for staggered three years terms beginning July 1st. Two, three year, two, two year and one, one year appointment.
So do you have a suggestion for who you would like for these four terms?
Not really, but I, I think honestly, um, I think go for it and just to get it done with.
Again, you're all very, you know.
Let's, let's make Mark the one that he is potentially going to be swapped out. That's the only thing I would say. The rest of us can, and take two or three and make Mark the one and.
The one year. Okay. So let's.
So I move that, um, um, the Mark Maggi term is for, for one year. Um, and there are two, three year terms. Did I hear that correctly?
Two, three years and two, um, two years.
Okay. And so for two, for the three year terms, I recommend Tim Davis, who's chair of the committee and Katie, Katie Dugan, who's
Yep.
de facto chair of the committee.
Opening her mouth.
Who shows up and then a, uh, two-year appointment for Paul Carlson.
Great. Okay. All right. Roll call.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Jean Haley Dipple, duh. Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Thank you for keeping us on track, Katie.
No problem.
All right. Elm Street, another very important one. Okay. So I believe these are one year terms.
Yep. Just like the
Okay.
Just like the last, so all the working groups that we created last year for master plan implementation by design were twelve months that we could review annually, depending on where the work was. And so there's no change to this charge. It's, it's a, again, a 12 month re-up of the charge and the, um, the appointments.
All right. So I will reread the, the one year term appointments here for Elm Street. MPIC, Tim Davis, planning board, Clark Brewer, select board, Diane Kennedy, citizen at large, Mark Sardina, planning director, ex officio Lauren Lind, DPW, ex officio Jason Federico and public safety, safety, ex officio, Chief Sylvia. Any, this, do we have a second and then a discussion from this?
So moved.
Okay. So I'm gonna do a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Diane.
Done, guys.
We're trying, we're trying. Diane.
Sorry. I gotta keep my hands down.
Wanted to stay on this, Diane.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to say that the appointments are for the, the appointed positions, which would be Tim Davis, Clark Brewer, myself and Mike Sardina, and not the ex officio.
No, I know. I'm just reading the whole group, but good, good point of order. Okay. So for those four. Corey, you moved it. We, we, I think we had a second.
Yeah.
We're at roll call vote. Jack.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Jean Haley Dipple, duh. Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Okay. And then so we're almost done. Last one, and then it's Tim Davis is up. All right. So zoning board of appeals. So we still need one associate member, but this is a three-year term for a full member. Um, David McMorris would like to be the full member.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Roll call. Jack.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Jean, I, you're mouthing it. So I think I, I can see you're voted. Okay.
Jean Haley Dipple, duh. Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Okay. Sorry. I know that was a slog, everyone. Thank you to Katie for keeping us on track. And I'm glad we got those done. Those are really, okay. Moving on to our harbor committee update, Tim Davis. We're at least under an hour late, Tim, but let's get you in the room. I think you should be coming in. Okay. Hi, Tim. Thank you for waiting.
Let me see if I can.
There you are.
Am I there?
Yep, you're there. Oh, we got a lot of view options. Okay. We got sailboat and rainbows and it's very on brand for a har- harbor committee.
First of all, thank you all very much. The, uh, for your, for your time and for your service. When I, when I spoke to, uh, Carrie this morning, she said two things. One is you're on at eight 20. And secondly, she asked me not to make my three hour presentation on the harbor. So, uh, I will not do that. Um, and the other thing I will say that for any other committees or boards, if I am, uh, if I am. if I am nominated, I will not run. If I elected, I will not.
All right, good to know.
I'm done. Please don't. Tracy, could you put up the the first slide deck? So we can see that. Are you with us, Tracy?
Yep.
I am. Which one is it, Tim?
I have two slide decks that are want to address, but are we getting there? Okay, well.
They're coming.
As that's, as that's coming, I will, I will start just in the interest of time. As part of the, there we go. This is the, this is the first, if you can see that, okay. As part of the Cohasset Municipal Harbor Plan, the Cohasset Harbor Committee created two working groups, the Cohasset Harbor Infrastructure Planning Working Group, which we refer to as CHIP, and the Cohasset Harbor Governance Working Group. The governance working group is yet to get off the ground, apparently due to a causity of interest or whatever, but it hasn't gotten off the ground yet. In the meantime, the infrastructure working group will handle any governance issues that come up. The CHIP working group has been meeting regularly and much of the report that I have will be on the work of that group and not necessarily the, the overall harbor group. The CHIP is comprised of three citizens at large, two of, two chairs or two positions are filled. The harbor committee chair and the Cohasset Harbor Master serve ex officio. Then there are a different ex officio members, which maybe include the, the fishermen, which as mentioned previously, are difficult to get involved in these committees, although I can say as an aside, I and other colleagues in the harbor have been regularly involved with discussing these issues with the commercial fishermen and we are trying very hard to keep them engaged and with a consensus to what it is that we're doing in the harbor. The harbor plan has 52 suggested projects, which if appropriately addressed will likely take five to 10 years to complete. During that time, I estimate that 50 to $100 million will be invested in and surrounding the harbor. That money will come from public, private and nonprofit sources. As an aside, Uncle Joe has assured me that Cohasset will get its share of the infrastructure bill once it clears Congress. So.
No, good aside.
On its way. We are going to be shovel ready with our hand out. The CHIP has been working on about a dozen projects, some of which are appropriately combined in a single effort. I will briefly describe the status of each of these. But before I do, I would like to publicly thank several people for their support and assistance. First, town manager Chris Senior has authorized what I refer to as the Cohasset Harbor Team. This team is initially made up of Michelle Leary, procurement and contracts manager, Lauren Lind, planning director, and Brianna Bennett, who has recently joined the team. There cannot be a stronger team to work with the CHIP in harbor projects and I am absolutely thrilled to be working with them. They will assist with identifying state and federal grant opportunities, finding a source for writing the grants and identifying the appropriate project management. This will ensure that the harbor plan will not, as harbor plans of yore, collect dust in a desk drawer. I would also like to thank the harbor master, Lori Gibbons. Lori has made every effort to attend all of our meetings and has provided invaluable historical context and insight into the process of implementing the projects. She also, when Government Island Pier project was delayed due to a chapter 91 filing requirement, stepped in and with the help of Michelle Leary, created a temporary conveyor system for Lawrence Wharf to assist the commercial fishermen while the Government Island project is in process. This slide just goes through a couple of the projects that are underway. Mike Sardina and George Baumgartner are heading, heading up with the collaboration of the Cohasset Historical Commission, the captain's walk, the break wall and seawall remediation project. We need to get formal authorization from Situit for jurisdictional authority because it is in Situit. And if we're going to do anything, we need to have Situit's cooperation. And then we need to have their, their authorization to improve the seawalls that may be in, you know, the Situit part of the harbor. Cohasset aquaculture is something that was called out in the harbor plan. It's important. I think that we address this. There are places where we can have agriculture, whether it's shellfish or kelp farming or other agriculture. We are waiting for a, I drafted a bylaw that I submitted to both a couple of people, citizens to review and also to the town council to review. But we need to get that done, get it reviewed and get it approved at the next town meeting. We have a shellfish constable that's been appointed, although I confess that I've been trying to meet with that person and have had difficulty with it. Both Chris Senior and Brianna have suggested they will help make that connection and I hope that happens. Because we need to have a shellfish constable involved in this for testing of the waters and involved with any agriculture we do. Dredging is a, is a critical part of the harbor. Maintenance dredging of the channel is required every three to five years. The harbor master has for this current cycle has contacted the US Army Corps of Engineers. It will probably take another couple of years. In the meantime, the channel has filled in. Some of the commercial fishermen run aground at low tide, so it's not a good situation. We are starting a plan for scheduled maintenance of the dredging of the channel as necessary, perhaps in collaboration with other harbors on the south shore. And then eventually we'll have to dredge the main harbor, the Cove and Bailey's Creek as well. Then we get to road remediation. As we do the seawall improvement and resiliency, the roads behind them require some some work. And I've talked to Brian Joyce, who was our town engineer, starting with Howard Gleason Road, which is probably the easiest one to start with. As the, as we put in, if we can, a seawall down Howard Gleason Road. Howard Gleason Road itself needs to be raised so that it doesn't flood. We've got many residents and citizens along that road. And if it floods, as it does regularly at any high, high tide with a storm, emergency vehicles are unable to get there. So that's an important, important part for us to get to. Okay, could we go to the next slide deck, please? What we, what the CHIP committee has been working on, particularly under the leadership of, of Mike Sardina and George Baumgartner, has put together a timeline. And, and the timeline is, it's what we call a notional timeline. Next slide, please. And this takes a look at all the projects that we've got underway and what the timeline is. The first is the Parker Avenue Boat Ramp. This was started probably, this was started actually by the harbor master long before the harbor committee actually came in, the current iteration came into existence. But it is, it is moved along. Town meeting has, has authorized funding. We are waiting for final approval, approval for the Seaport Economic Council grant. Hopefully that will come. If it does, then we will start that project for the improvement of the boat ramp this fall. And it will be completed by boating season next spring. The Government Island Pier and Dock Lift is a long-term project. I mentioned it earlier. We ran into an issue that there was no chapter 91 license for it ever. And so we needed to go through the whole process of getting a chapter 91 license. Eventually what that will be is an improved pier and dock system with two lift systems, one a conveyor system, another a crane, which will allow heavier lifts for the, the commercial fishermen and anyone else that may want to use it. But it'll be improved. It'll be raised a bit, so it'll be less susceptible to the storm tides and, and the high water levels. The next one is town landing, Lawrence Wharf. As I mentioned, Lori and Michelle have teamed together to get the conveyor system there. That is, will be a temporary system, which when Government Island gets going, that will move to Government Island. And there was $40,000 of funding at town meeting to get that going. And my understanding is that is on track to be completed by the end of the summer. Next slide, please. Thank you, Tracy. Are we there? We did the seawall. Oh, yeah. The captain's walk, I, I mentioned. George and Mike have been working on that with, with the historical commission. There is a lot of planning that has to be done and we have submitted a request for $4,000 to help fund the planning for that. My request, which I'll make at the end of this, is for the $4,000 funding. But the captain's walk is visioned to be a place where the community is, has access to the harbor, can come down and start at, let's say, the Oaks. The whole new development at the, what is now the Cohasset Harbor Inn. There will be a captain's walk in front of that that where people will be able to access it and walk from the Oaks all the way to Government Island and enjoy the harbor, which they, it's very difficult to do now. Those of you who have been down there, it's hard to get to it. It's hard to access it. But this will be a huge improvement for accessibility for the Cohasset community and others. The Elm Street corridor, we've been working closely with the working group. As you, as you know, I serve on that as well. And we are, what we're doing is tying together the link between the village and the harbor so that it becomes a accessible and friendly place where you can walk or ride bikes or use other vehicles to get from the village to the harbor. As you come down Elm Street under the configuration that is, that we expect, you'll be able to look right out at the harbor and the whole new construction will allow that, that viewscape to the harbor from Elm Street. The Cohasset Harbor Inn redevelopment, we've been working closely with George and Ted. That is underway and I, and, and I think they're waiting for a few other things, but it, it's well underway. They've got their, their permits. And I think the community is going to be very excited to see what is constructed there. It'll be, I think, a terrific addition to the, the neighborhood. I know all the neighbors are excited about it. And I think it'll be a real improvement and will really help with the revitalization of the harbor. Is there one more slide? Or is that the end of it, Tracy? Ah, here we go. Okay, the shellfish bylaw I mentioned. I've, I've drafted one. It's with the town, needs town council to go over it. The Cohasset Harbor Governance Working Group, it'd be great to have somebody raise their hand and take the leadership in, in starting that. But as I mentioned, in the meantime, the CHIP will take on any governance issue as necessary. And then, as I mentioned, the administrative, Michelle Leary volunteered as the point person, but we now have a harbor team, as I refer to it, which I've been assured does not, when we meet, does not violate open meeting law because, so I'll try the best. I don't want to be incarcerated for violating open meeting law. So we've got quite a team, which, by the way, I, I will say once again, is the, one of the strongest teams of people to address any issue that I've ever been associated with. So I really appreciate that. So with that, I can just finish by saying I respectfully request that the funding for the captain's walk study be approved. And that an agreement with Situit for the jurisdiction of the breakwater be completed. And that, that really is something that whoever we get as town council can deal with. And that the shellfish bylaw be reviewed by whoever the appropriate council is and approved at our next town meeting, so we can move forward with that. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. That was, you fit in a lot of information and not that much time.
I can go on for another three hours.
I know, no, I know. Yeah. But that was really helpful. Thank you for that substantive update.
Right.
And I will just say too, we are very much aware of the possible aquaculture issues that we are all dealing with behind the scenes right now and we can revisit that publicly if we want to. So thank you for addressing that and bringing that up in addition to all this other stuff. All right, Jean, I saw your hand first.
Hi, Tim. Thanks very much for the presentation. Very interesting. So one question that I had that I didn't see necessarily throughout the presentation, but it strikes me that and, and maybe this is in the works contemplated down the line, but the vision of linking essentially the walkability of the harbor, including to the captain's walk, parking is going to be a critical aspect of that. We already know parking is an issue down there. Now with the new project replacing Cohasset Harbor Inn is going to put more strain on that area from a parking standpoint, most likely. You know, the, the select board obviously has the power of disposition and acquisition over town land, including that little piece of property that's so critical to maintain public access for where the new development is going in near the Veterans Memorial. But I was wondering if there was any sort of thought that had been given to the parking constraints that are really just.
Well, thank you. Thank you for bringing that up because it, parking is critical in the town and I, I met with a small group about the village. Cassie brought a few of us together. We talked about a number of issues. Parking is critical. Parking, I think, cannot be disassociated with a number of other issues. Transportation related, whether it's walking or bicycling. If you can bring people to a site without vehicles, you can get more people there with less congestion. Parking places, parking lots, I think can be managed and how people use them. There are a number of technologies how you manage parking areas. And I think, you know, I've suggested that Katie Dugan and she said, we don't really need another working group, but I think parking is one that we really need to raise to a level where we all consider it. I will make a couple of comments. One is, I don't think the new development at the Cohasset Harbor Inn will increase the need for parking. I think it will probably take care of itself. I, I think actually it may mitigate a lot of parking because a hotel requires a lot of parking, but residents don't require necessarily that same parking. I don't know the, the metrics of it. I can also say, I probably should have mentioned that the owner of the Mill River Marina and now Atlantica is very concerned about parking and how to best revitalize those properties. And he's working on that. He's hired Aiman O'Meara, who is known to a number of us. Aiman's a very knowledgeable guy about developments and is working in collaboration with the harbor committee to make sure that we get something. Mill River Marina, as you probably know, has been dark basically for the last 10 years. And, and I think we really, we as a community would like to see something exciting there that draws the public there, but not necessarily draws vehicles there. Also, finally, I can say that the Government Island has an opportunity for increased parking without creating a lot of disturbance up there. There are places in, on Government Island where you could create additional parking. And then it's a matter of how you get people from there to wherever they want to go. So I, you know, I really think this is a an issue that needs all of us to pay attention to, get creative about, bring in technology wherever we can to create an opportunity for better use of the harbor and the village, but with less vehicle traffic.
Well said, Tim. And yeah, parking is a problem all over town. And I think we're well aware of that. Jean, do you have a follow up on that?
No, no, I, I.
No, no, I I I think the harbor.
It's an ongoing conversation.
We know there's a strain right now and the Cohasset Harbor Inn's been dormant, but for the movie. No, it's the more the more success brings other issues.
Well said. Corey, you were next.
Yeah, I was gonna say something else was starting the parking thing, you know, I shot and emailed Tim earlier. That was one of the things that, you know, the 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 economic task force, you know, kind of zoned in on. Sorry, no pun intended. And, you know, trying to fix, yeah, that was terrible. I'll pay for that later, but the you know, but what I emailed to Tim is is really what we've kind of identified is is trying to create corridors of, you know, so you're not parking somewhere, but you're invited to continue down a place. You know, so you you're parking in the town lot, but you're invited to go downtown and you're invited to go to the harbor. You know, putting a parking lot in the harbor, just this isn't where this belongs, but we still need to get people there. And that's also, you know, part of the discussions we've been having. There's a regional pilot study for last mile transportation, you know, and and is there a way that we can we can connect the harbor to our downtown or to other areas that have parking that won't require an automobile? So this is a broader discussion and certainly something that if you want the harbor to be beautiful, but also be active, we got to solve that because, you know, a beautiful harbor with a parking garage is not going to work. And Tim, I want to say thank you for your passion on this. I mean, for any progress we made, there needs to be a champion and you are, you know, the case point alpha of a champion for something. So thank you for that. And especially thank you for kind of prioritizing accessibility. I think we see a big pattern throughout the world is to make these beautiful areas harder and harder to see, whether it's with developments or walls or tree. And this is something that, you know, the captain's walk and keeping the harbor as something that the community can can see is really just, it's it's commendable. So thank you for for prioritizing that vision for the harbor, because I think that's that's the way we keep it a gem of the community. So thank you especially for the for the work on that.
Well, thanks, Corey. I appreciate your support on that.
Well said. Diana, did I see your hand up?
I I I put it up it really to just again, thank Tim, but also say that one of the things that we have been talking about with the master plan implementation committee and chunking up the various projects that through the working groups is economic development in the village is not disassociated from the Elm Street corridor, is not disassociated with the harbor, and it all is interrelated. And, you know, thanks to to Tim and Katie and and for keeping that kind of overarching conversation going, even what when it's in these little buckets to to kind of do the surgical analysis. But I think that's probably something we need to spend time doing more of is bringing in these various working groups together to to update each of us. Because it's all happening and there are people kind of overseeing the bigger picture, but it is all interrelated and we're not going to solve one problem without impacting another or create something wonderful in the village that that should and could impact the harbor in a positive way. So.
And yeah, to echo what Diane and Corey were saying, we we the harbor got brought up all the time in our economic task force working group, because a lot of people, when they're talking about, you know, frequenting the village to do things and stimulate the village economy, they're also going over to the harbor. They're also, they also want to go over there. They want to walk, they want to eat, they want to do other things. So these things are all inextricably intertwined, and I agree that we need to do better at figuring out how we can communicate with each other about how they're related here. But for what you said you specifically needed, Tim, for tonight, are you saying, do we need a motion for you on one of these things? I know eventually.
Well, I would leave it, I would leave it to Chris Senior. I submitted a request for four thousand dollars. I don't know whether he has a specific fund he can dip into for that, but we need that to get started with the captain's walk. The other, the others really have to wait till you have a town council that we can selfish bylaws and the and the jurisdictional issues with Situate, we need to have town council. So we can wait for that. But if you would work with town with the town manager to get us approval of four thousand dollars, that would be great.
Chris?
It's Tim and I have spoken. I mean, there isn't, I don't, I don't have a time manager fund for requests that just come in. So I'm working with 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 planning and we're trying to figure out a way to find some fun funds and an account that already exists. It's something we're working on. So I'm, it's not a lot of money. That said, i- if it's if it's something that's available on a fund that I have to come back to this board for, I will, if we can find it available in an existing place, the budget, we will do that too.
That'd be terrific. Thanks, Chris.
All right. So stay tuned for all of this, Tim, and hopefully I know we always say that to you, but thank you for putting these issues on our radar.
And by the way, I will be in Situate on Thursday, Carrie.
Yes, I was I was going to bring that up as the last point. So just for the public that hasn't heard about this and for board members who haven't heard about this, I know Corey and I are trying to go to this meeting too on Thursday. There is a threat right now to close the Coast Guard Station in Situate. And this would have a big impact on out on our town, obviously, because then it would push the closest station to hull and could really impact response times for people in need all around the harbor and throughout our town. So Situate, I know, is working on trying to stop this, and I think that Cohasset should also help possibly write a letter from both our board and then possibly Tim writing a letter from the harbor committee if we can for this. This is all just happening, so we're just getting information on this issue. I believe there's a meeting in Situate at one P M. On Thursday discussing this, but I think that would be have a negative impact on our town for obvious reasons. So I I wanted to make the public aware of it. And Tim and I talked about it earlier, so I it's just something that is ongoing right now, and we're hoping we can prevent that closure. Corey, I saw your hand first, but then you took it down. And then, yeah, Diane.
I I just have a question as to with whom is this meeting on Thursday? Is it the the federal legislation or federal delegates or Coast Guard?
I believe the the town manager and select board in Situate have scheduled this, and we just got invited. Chris, do you know who actually called them?
Yeah, Situate just pulled interested folks from the region together and they, just for a strategy session, that's all it is. It's just an so they've asked communities to, if anyone's available, just to come and join the meeting. This will be the beginning of the conversation, not the end.
Yeah, but it's not like at a hearing with.
No, 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 no. It's about coordinating responses and getting communities to sign up and local legislators have been invited or their staffs, so we can figure it out.
Great, thanks. Seems like there's an agreement. Oh, no, go ahead, Tim.
I I can just add that this is, it really came clear how important this was two days ago, when a an overturned kayak was seen out in the area of Brush Island. The coordination between the hard Cohasset Harbor Master, the Coast Guard and the Cohasset Police was incredible. And they all got together and worked together to find actually that it was simply overturned kayak that had drifted off the beach. But had it been somebody that was out there and was drowning, they would have been a lot better served had they had that good coordination with the Coast Guard that comes out of Situate and and Cohasset resources.
No, you're right, Tim. And the same thing happened actually this time last week on our last meeting last Tuesday. If you all remember the storm that was happening during our meeting, some stand up paddleboarders in Situate got caught in the storm and were also rescued and their lives were saved. They were clinging to lobster buoys. So I mean, like Tim was saying, you know, if a couple minutes can make the difference between life and death here. So I do think that this is something this our board should fight for and possibly draft a letter for. I'm going to be in contact with some people in Situate to see how we can best do that. But, you know, if the board's willing, I think that we should express our our support for keeping that station. Jack?
Yeah, go back quite a while to the parking issue and the activity.
Okay, we're back to that. Okay.
Well, I know, but my hands.
All right.
Okay.
No.
For a while, but never mind, we're getting late, you know, we don't. You know, the, I think it's important that we understand as a community that if you increase the development and the harbor, you increase the usage, which increases the demand for parking. We don't have parking. At some point, intelligent planning recognizes the sustainable limits for a community. And I would suggest that most people in town understand that we really are at that level of sustainable living in Cohasset. So when we have these wonderful plans and we're going to develop this and develop that, the character of the town is not going to be the same. When I was on on conservation, we also do stormwater, so we get to see everything that comes in. And we get to see how it impacts. And I'm not an ardent conservationist, but I'm an ardent protector of our beautiful town. And I think that as a select board that we should be very much aware that this jewel that we we have entrusted with can easily be lost. So let's be very, very careful on that. And the other thing that that I did want to bring up, so everybody in town is aware, is there is another movement of oyster farming, which will be beyond the limit that Tim and the Bassington Beach Association has stopped the pens on the actual title areas because they found out it's private property. Now, the oyster lobby wants to go further out. Now, if you look at further out, let's think where that really is. That's where the the rowing people are rowing. That's where the kids from the yacht club and the kids from the Cohasset Sailing Club, there are a lot of kids out there, plus the dults and some paddleboards and all that. That's a major recreational area. And if the aquaculture oyster farming gets a footload a foothold in there, we're going to see a very large part of our recreational, shall we say, the commons, the sea commons will be expropriated for for private use. So I just think that people in the town should be aware of that. And Tim and Tim has contacted me and one of the things when I talked to Carrie to make sure it was on the agenda. So everybody in town should be alerted about this.
And we are trying to work behind the scenes right now, Jack, to get more information because we don't have an info to have it on the agenda or to make any decisions. So this is ongoing and a lot of we are aware of this and it's important, but it wasn't appropriate as an agenda item yet.
Well, I think it's appropriate that the citizens be widely made aware that this is going on.
Fair. We we just don't have all the details.
I know.
Yeah, no, I know. But yeah, this is absolutely part of what's going to be, how the whole harbor is going to be affected, obviously. So it's going to be.
Just using the bully pulpit to sound the alarm.
I'm I'm just saying it's going to be a future agenda item. It just didn't make sense.
I know.
Tonight. All right, Jean.
With respect to the Situate Coast Guard Station and the consolidation, today is the deadline to submit a comment in the federal register objecting to that. Really, we're all aware, August third. So if the board would like to make a small discreet comment, I can probably assist in getting it uploaded before the midnight deadline.
A point of order, just let's, I recommend that we discuss this in topics that recently anticipated, just for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any any other questions or comments for Tim or Tim? Do you have any final points?
I don't, but I just want to thank you all for what you do and and your service. It's you do a lot, and I appreciate the support you have for the harbor and we'll we'll keep at it. We're we got a long way to go.
Thank you, and thank you for your service too, Tim.
Okay, thanks. Good night.
All right. Moving on. Chris can give us an update on our town clerk retirement interim appointment situation.
Hey, I just, I'll make it quick. Let me see if I if this is Miriam, who I think it is, I'll have her join us. The 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 sum and substance at this point is that it's been a it's been a challenge. We've we've worked with the the Association of Town Clerks, talked to Carol, engaged. And again, I can have Miriam explain more of this. But in some substance, at this point, it's been at the the pool of of interim candidates is how would you put it, Miriam? You muted.
We can tell by your nonverbals, though, Miriam.
Nonexistent.
So we're going to continue to, we're going to continue to do everything we can. That said, and I've already talked to Carol about, you know, keeping flexible if she's able with her full retirement. We're going to continue to 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 make phone calls and to, you know, circulate the the center and post. That said, it's not, it's not, there doesn't seem to be a whole lot out there. One other thing that we've talked, that might be, might be worth worth considering, and I'm just throwing this out there for for conversation. It is the concept of re re rethinking the position and maybe this, you know, beginning a conversation about whether it can be appointed or elected. A number of communities of our size have done that in other parts of the state. I saw some statistics the other day, which are from nineteen, but it's fairly recent. That about a third of all clerks in the state are appointed at this point and that the numbers continue to rise. Only because it's getting harder and harder, particularly in a community of our size to find people to do this. I'm not saying there isn't anybody out there. There may be very well, somebody who jumped in. That said, because it has such very technical requirements at the state, it's not a policymaker. It's an implementer and a follower and a rule enforcer. So it might be something to think about. I'm just throwing that out there. We're going to continue to to search and see what's out there and report back to you at the next meeting. That said, you know, it's one of those jobs that when it's done really well, you don't pay much attention to it because it's being devil's split. There's a lot of work going on and Carol can I can attest all the hard hour, many hours that I've seen Carol put in in the job and the time I've been here. I can also attest to where I've seen in my prior community where we had a really good clerk succeeded by a not very good clerk and 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 it became very problematic. I know it really had nothing to do with their talents. I had to do what just happened to how the votes went down. And, you know, that said, it's not a decision for me at all. So I'm just throwing that out there for conversation. We're going to continue to search. That's that said, the process for changing a position from a pointed from elective to appointive is governed by statute. Requires a special term meeting action, no less than sixty days before a town election. So it'd be something that if it was kind of happened this year, would have to happen in a special term meeting, then it goes to legislature, it's a home petition, and then has to go in front of the ballot. Actually, it actually just goes on the ballot, doesn't even have to go to the state. So there's a provision in state law for doing it. That said, as we settle out council, they can give you more advice on that, but it's just something to keep in the back of your minds.
Thank you, Chris. And I will say this is, you know, you look at what town clerks and election clerks are going through across the country. This is not an easy position to have right now, and it's tough and it's tough to recruit people for it. You know, it makes me nervous to ever take, you know, the people's choice away. You know, it makes me nervous to not let the citizens choose something like this. And I immediately, you know, get a little nervous about making that change, but I also understand that it's like you said, it's we're having trouble recruiting. So it's it's something that I I'm open to. You know, I wish it could stay in elected position just because the people should choose, but I see the struggle we're going through with this. So I think it's a discussion we should have. Does anyone have any initial thoughts on this as we're trying to recruit more? We can talk about this more at our next meeting on the twenty fourth. Corey's nodding, I think Diane.
Let's talk about it in a future.
All right. And in the meantime, can all of you here try to recruit some more? You know, thinking about people that might do well as this interim appointment, someone looking for a town clerk gig like this. Let's try to do some recruiting if we can, even on social media. I'll do some social media posts, but I'm hoping we can find some possible good candidates for this interim appointment. At least that would be nice. All right, Jean.
Well, I don't know if we've limited our search to clerks, but you know, it strikes me that you could through greater advertising, probably you know, get a bigger base of people who have managerial and or legal skills that would probably pretty easily at least on a part time basis, be able to fit the bill of a town clerk. Potentially, I mean, it it's weird, it's a weird, it's a weird, you know, window of time that we're looking for.
Yeah, we're not looking for necessarily town clerk experience, Jean. I believe the call said that it, you know, we're we're open to considering someone that has this type of managerial experience or has these skills. They don't have to have clerk experience necessarily, right, Miriam? The call's a little more open than that. Right, Miriam? Is, the, the call's a little more open than that, right?
Well, we, we're calling a couple of different groups. So we've, we've posted an interim position with the MMA, um, and certainly on our website, we've reached out to Massachusetts Town Clerk Association to see if there were any retired clerks. I had discussion with one of them. A- and she's just too far away. She doesn't want to drive three hours, um, a day. We've also networked. Not only myself, but some of my, my peers in town. We've gone out to people we know. And that has come back again, empty-handed. I've reached out to all my colleagues on the MMHR network to see if they know anyone. So far, nothing has come up. We had an internal employee who was very interested. And we interviewed her. She has withdrawn from the process because she doesn't want to give up her regular job for an interim gig. Uh, she might actually be an excellent town clerk. She has a lot of the skill sets, although she's never been before. But, you know, there's just too much risk in giving up her full-time job to do the interim job. So we continue to look. I've put it out there on my social media. And, you know, and I've, I've talked to people both in Dedham as well as a couple of other communities. And they're just, there is no one that we've identified that is interested in the interim role. So, uh, that's where we are.
Okay, Diane.
And, and I, I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to clarify that the interim role does not have to be a resident of Cohasset.
That is correct.
Really could be anybody with, um, any skill set that would be appropriate.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this? I think we should revisit the issue at our next meeting and see if we can get anyone. Does that sound okay? All right. All right, we will come back to this issue. Okay, Chris, town manager update.
All right, I'll keep it really quick. Um, I'm looking forward to introducing some new staff at the next meeting. Uh, we have, uh, uh, an incoming assistant rec director, which is very exciting, an incoming new conservation agent, which is very exciting. And a, an incoming payroll clerk, which is exciting. So hopefully able to introduce all of them to you at the next, uh, the next board meeting. They're all starting at various times this month. Uh, or, or excited to have them all. And, um, uh, I just also want to, uh, thank Pam and, and Brian and Jason and all those who worked on that whole little beach seaweed thing last week. It's one of those weird things that come out of left field. It got, uh, unusual attention. Channel five actually put it on the news. But it was one of those things, you know, you don't know what you're dealing with. It came up. Pam handled it really well. Um, uh, we work with the Sandy Beach Association. I handle it really well. And the good news is that it was resolved really quickly. So, uh, and it, it turned out to be just bad, you know, big, but, but you see within, bummed under the sand for quite a while. And it was comfortable until all the rains came and the rain just kind of meant it really much. And wet and plus seaweed plus heat equals decomposing. So. So, uh, it, it, but it was again, one of those little weird things. But again, staff really jumped in and the Sandy Beach Association did a great job. And we let everybody know what was going on. So, uh, you know, these kind of weird things sometimes come out of left field and I, uh, just a testament to people's resiliency that they just jumped in, we got it done and we moved on. So hopefully we won't see any more of those, but these are the kind of weird things that sometimes pop up during the year. So. More, more, more in three weeks. Look, hopefully it have a few people to be in the meeting to introduce all of you to. Now, the new technology to do a hybrid Zoom meeting is in. We're going to be testing it and the goal is to hopefully roll it out for the twenty-fourth. So it, it's a, well, I won't talk about it in detail, but I, we're going to be testing an app, but we're looking to be able to install it in the point, in the room, at the main room at, at, uh, with the commons and be able to make that as a prime meeting space. Um, and it will be able to, you can literally just be able to go on and push a button and puff your on Zoom and then you're on one four three TV. So it doesn't even require staff management, um, because everyone's kind of on the screen and it's a video fencing. And I'm sorry, audio fencing is supposed to work that would keep out extraneous noise. And, uh, so, uh, we're looking to test it. Uh, Ron's looking to install it. So this weekend next. So hopefully for the twenty-fourth, uh, that'll be the first, it's first test with all of you.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. All right, select board comments. Let's see. Diane, you want to start tonight?
Sure. Um, I just wanted to bring up, um, from our earlier, um, during public comment period that we last, um, addressed and looked over a film policy and created that quite some time ago. I believe it was like in twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen. And, um, I, I suggest maybe we revisit that and the event policy sometime, um, you know, in late August or September or sometime, just to see if there's stuff that we didn't consider back then. And, and, and truthfully, one of the things that we don't cover is what happens on somebody's private property. And, and, and it does, there can be things, somebody could have a big wedding in their yard that is going to impact residents and neighbors. And, you know, to the extent that we can come up with something, especially for films, which is basically commercial use of a residential property, um, and, and package it a, a little bit better and, and maybe come up with a, a real protocol for informing neighbors and everything. It might just help us. Again, everything comes down to communication and, and, uh, it, it was just something we, we didn't have the structure to really deal with at this point.
I think that's a really good point.
And that's it. Thanks.
Get it on a future agenda. Jack, you have your hand up. I'm not sure if it's a response to Chris or. Hold on, you're muted.
The host muted me. Now, I wanted to ask Chris a question. I've asked several times if we can get a handle on the, uh, payroll of town hall and the answer I've gotten in the past is, well, get the town, uh, reports over the past ten years and have, add them up. I just have to say that that's probably not a helpful answer, but if that's still your answer, Chris, if anybody in town would like to help me get the town reports and add up the salary so we can see what's going on. We're going to have some very serious financial challenges in this town with the town hall, with school facilities. The schools badly need some work. So just, it's common financial prudence to get a handle on your payroll. And when a member of the select board asks for updates, and so you can chart it and see what's been going on to be told pound sand, and you can go grab the past town meeting reports, which is what you've told me on two occasions, Chris. So if somebody would like to help me do that, give me a call. Thank you. That's my.
Is that your selection comments to your select board? Okay.
Yeah, it was meant to be, uh, meant to be a question to Chris, but.
Okay. All right, Cory.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, I know that the board, we, we chose a good direction or chose a different direction. My apologies. We made a kind of good deliberation about town council. So I do want to thank, uh, Paul Durensis and all the lawyers and Caris North. You know, I, I, as I was thinking about this, uh, there was, if anyone's a hockey fan, I kind of was making a hockey analogy where sometimes, you know, really great coaches sometimes need to find a new team, a new team need to find a new coach. And, and sometimes that's just, that's just the, the right path forward. So we got a lot of great people that did have, had a lot of really great work for the town. And I'm really appreciative of all that. I've had great conversations with, with a lot of these, um, you know, uh, uh, different people throughout my just over a year here already. But so thank you for their, for their work so far, and I'm excited, uh, to meet, um, the new, uh, new councils going forward. Thanks, everyone.
Beautifully said, Cory. I echo that. Jean.
So I continue to be impressed by the amount of work that our volunteers are doing throughout town, including Tim Davis, Katie Dugan. Um, and I know that there's a lot of people that are sort of silently toiling on all of these, these committees. And so I just wanted to give them a, a shout out. And I echo Cory's words and I'm part of, I think the sort of switching up the team is in large part also to, you know, give these committees a fresh start as well to help find ways to support them as best we can. Because the town does really run on volunteers, um, who aren't on the payroll. So I appreciate the efforts there.
Well said, Jean. And yeah, I echo those sentiments about Paul Durensis too, and all his years of service and all his firm's years of service. We are very lucky to have had him for that long. So I, I'm grateful for that as well. The other thing I wanted to bring up, I know that some people in town have expressed some concern about going back to fully in-person meetings based on research we're seeing and what's happening, especially what's going on with the Delta variant. So I do think we might want to revisit once we get into fall, if we want to continue meeting on Zoom or if we want to be back in person, or if we want to just keep doing a hybrid model where some of us are in person. I never want any of you to feel unsafe. I never want anyone in town to feel unsafe if we, we ask them to come in person. So I do think this is something we have to keep monitoring. And depending on how the next few weeks goes and a few months, we might want to bring back some COVID updates to our agenda, just based on how things are playing out. So I wanted to mention that. Again, I think change, things are seeming like they're changing very quickly. So if anyone has thoughts on that, we can discuss that at another meeting. Just, you know, I, I want everyone to feel safe, but I also would like for us to be in person sometimes if we can, but if we have to stay on Zoom, we also can do that. And I was also going to bring up, uh, leading into topics not reasonably anticipated, I was going to bring up the coast guard situation. So Jean, can we go back to this? Cause first of all, I'm so impressed that you noticed there might be a midnight deadline. So I'm giving you an A plus for noticing that because I had no idea. I assumed there wasn't because we, the meeting is on Thursday in Situate. So. I a hundred percent, yeah, no, go ahead.
I mean, like, quick research might be off, but when I quickly searched the federal register for Coha- for Situate Coast Guard Station, I noticed that the deadline is August 3rd and typically that's midnight.
East Coast time, I.
Yeah. So, you know, option A is, and we probably have to schedule another meeting just to do this, but, um, is to try to just submit it late, see if they'll take it. And, you know, sometimes that happens, although you're rolling the dice there. Or just do a small comment right now, at least just to have a place, placeholder, if, you know, people feel strongly about it. And, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I've been, I've been paying attention, but also, you know.
Yeah, you're, you're multitasking.
Putting down something, um, you know, so I can, I can propose something if people are interested in like, you know, a placeholder to register our.
So I would have, I would have no problem doing that as long as we continue to coordinate with Situate. And think about if, if there's a way to do a, a more substantive letter as well in the future, I would like that too. But tonight, we, I don't think we have anything to lose by getting in before the deadline. Does anyone have any thoughts? Cory?
Gina, I was looking through the thing. I didn't find any deadline. How did you, did you have to calculate that from a start date to an end date?
Yeah, it's not easy to find. Um.
It's a great website.
Go to. Yeah. Um, if you go to the federal register, so the publication date was June ninth.
Yeah.
And then if you go from there, it says you may, so under addresses, the big title, you may submit comments identified by the docket number of blah, blah, blah. And then when you click through that to submit comments, um, then you have to, of course, this isn't easy. Uh, you go to.
I'm there now. Yeah, submit a comment.
And, and then when you submit a comment.
Good live research, you guys. Chris, you have a quoncet and then Diane.
Yeah, so, so Situate has denied, the town, when the town manager of Situate sent out this request to people on the Thursday, they've been attached and, and notified the federal government that it was really not reasonable to, to ask for something in the middle of summer for like, with a notice. And they've asked for an extension. The one that's not officially been granted is Jean notices. It's, they have not said, oh, by the way, we're extending it, but there's been an ask for an extension. Point is well taken. If the town, even just putting a notice and saying the Cohasset Select Board, um, you know, has strong concerns and we'll be adding to, to the limited amount of time to respond, we'll be, uh, we'll be supplementing our response and, you know, shortly or something like that. Something like that, I think would be a placeholder. Um, and that, um, the real, the real work here is going to be lobbying Congressman Lynch and, and Senator Warren and Senator Markey and saying, hey, you can't let this happen. Cause at the end of the day, um, they'll have a lot of influence on us. So that, that's what, I think that's what Thursday would be about, uh, because it's just, it's not literally, since you have found this by accident, they were never notified. Right. It's just happening. And, uh, so they're not really happy about this. And, you know, this has been kicking around for years and always say, oh, maybe they'll close it. But if you look at it, I think Jean has seen it, that the notice is like three random stations in the Great Lakes and. Jersey, yeah. You know, uh, so, uh, a little different. So, uh, but I, I, again, I, I think if the board could, would authorize, uh, since Jean seems to be the resident expert of spots, uh, just putting a, like a, the, the board, the, the board's concerned and it's going to be supplementing its response because of, you know, the, the limited amount of time would be appropriate.
I mean, move to submit a comment in the federal register with respect to the notice relating to the consolidation of redundant coast guard boat stations, namely the Situate one. The comment is to say, the Cohasset Select Board objects to the consolidation of the seasonal, seasonal Situate, Massachusetts Coast Guard Station. This coast guard station supports the communities of Cohasset, Situate and other contiguous communities. These coastal communities have substantial boating, swimming, kayaking, paddle boarding and other water recreational activities in demand, which also increases risk to residents and visitors as evidenced by recent drownings in Situate. If the Situate Coast Guard is shuttered, there will be a vast stretch of heavily used coastline that is relatively far from the nearest coast guard stations in Massachusetts. This is particularly true in an emergency and or mercurial weather during which response times matter. Thus, the Cohasset Select Board objects to the closure of the Situate Coast Guard Station, which jeopardizes the safety of Situate, Cohasset and neighboring community and urges the coast guard to reconsider its proposal. The Cohasset Select Board requests an extension to comment further and intends to supplement our response.
Second.
Second.
Beautiful. Okay. Well, hold on, we have a second.
I would probably just say we direct the town managers to submit that on, on our behalf, just for procedural purposes. Is that what you were imagining, Jean?
I, I can, I can email it to you, Chris. I'm fine with.
Yeah, if we've audited, it probably should come through him. Yeah, or Carrie.
It can, yeah, it can, I'm, I mean.
Have Chris do it. Just email it to Chris. I would recommend.
That's fine.
Look, could, could I just confirm that Chris is okay with that?
Is there, well, I, I can talk.
I'm happy to do it to myself or.
I'm actually on the website. I, I guess it's not that complicated. If you want to send me that language, Jean, I'll just, uh, I can pluck it in. And I, and you can check to make sure I did it right.
We got an hour and fifty minutes to get this in. Jean, I think the language is beautiful though. So. I am at town hall right now. I won't leave until we make sure we get this submitted.
It should be really straightforward in terms of.
And I will also get updates from some other players here about this issue to update you all at our next meeting.
All right, so we can.
All right, yes, yes. All right. So roll call vote. We have a motion in a second.
Cora Evans, I.
Jeanne Hilly Dipple, done.
Diane.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Harry Thompson, I. All right, we have no minutes to approve, so it, it's the big moment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, second.
We have a second. All right, roll call.
Jack, great, nine.
Cory Evans, I.
Jeanne Hilly Dipple, done.
Diane, I hear you talking.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Harry Thompson, I. All right, thanks, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Hey, Carrie and Chris, do you want me to stay on a second to? Do you want to share screen or, or something if you want to talk through any of this? Um, maybe we want to, can we stop the live recording?
Yeah, let me, let me, uh, hold on, I'm trying to stop this. I want, let me, let me, um.